Hello, I'm David Hughes and I'm going to present to you my opinion on the May 26th Exeter Township Board of Supervisors meeting. I will be referring a lot to my notes. This was a meeting that was absolutely incredible. I've attended or watched 17 months' worth of Exeter Township Board of Supervisor meetings, and this one is, I consider, the most bizarre and revealing meeting that I have ever witnessed. You will have the opportunity to watch the Boys Club in action, and underneath it, all the special interests that's involved in our community. They're going to move Item 9 to the front right after they do the regular approvals. There's about 10 agenda items total. Number 9 will come in front. They're going to address that first because it's for Mr. Mascaro, and they want to take care of him and his request to waive zoning requirements for an addition onto his recycling facility. That's all I have to say about that. But then, when they've taken care of their buddy, then they will enter into a discussion lasting about 36 minutes that at times is going to be confusing, at times incomprehensible, and ultimately, it exposes to them, to us, their lack of knowledge and the complete and obvious lack of any work performed by the supervisors related to this Promenade and the architect. And they've had time. Dave Spees has been on the board for two... this is his third year, so he's been on the board for two years and five months. Casadis has been on the board for over four years, and that's back in 2016 where they initially contracted with KCBA to look at the plans for our current existing facilities and tell us what they think we could do. So they were hired before. You'll hear more about KCBA as I discuss this. But it's really just amazing. What you see will be scary, beyond belief. These are the people that are running our township, and they're working on this project that will cost us, some estimates, 30, 35, close to 40 million. You'll hear one supervisor, I'll talk about it, where he talks about the fact that we can't go forward with this because we don't have the financing lined up. So are we borrowing more money? I don't know. The other thing I want to do before I jump into this 36-minute discussion on the architect, I want to talk about Item 8 briefly, and then the rest of my comments will be totally directed at the 36-minute conversation about the architect. In Item 8, it's an item where they're talking about giving relief to the tenants at the Promenade. And before they could turn all of it against me, I want to make it clear, I support helping out our local business people 100%. We need to help them. But that doesn't mean that we forgive their rent. And I think they did the right approach. They deferred the rental payments they could pay at a later date. That's very fair. We want them to survive. In fact, we want to turn that mall back to the tax rolls. But there's one case that they really, really, really screwed up, and it shows you how little work and effort they put into managing our township. And it has to do with Monroe Muffler. Now, they tell us in the video, in the meeting you'll see, that Monroe location is corporate-owned. So they never bothered to look at any of the information about Monroe. They get a letter, Monroe says, "We're not going to pay you for six months." So they push back, say, "Well, no, no, we'll let you float for three months." But they said, "Not till 2021" do they want to pay us. But listen to this, folks. Monroe Muffler is publicly traded under the MNRO symbols. You can look it up, you can look and see what they do. It's public knowledge. Their stock closed on Friday at $55.10, and that gives them a market cap of about $1.8 billion. They've got a trailing 12-month PE ratio of 33.7, and if you divide that into the stock price of $55.10, that tells us their trailing 12-month earnings per share are $1.63. Yeah. And then in March, they declared a 22-cent quarterly dividend. And that's their standard dividend each quarter, so they're going to give back to their stockholders 88 cents per share. There's over 33 million shares outstanding, so they're going to pay out, like, over the course of the year, $29 million in dividends to their stockholders. Okay? And for 2020, this March quarter was their end of their 2020 year. Their sales increased 4.7%. They had record revenue of $1.3 billion. So my question is, why are our supervisors having our residents, our taxpayers subsidize this corporation? A billion, almost a $2 billion cap, making a record money in their 2020 year. It's amazing. $1.3 billion they made this last year. So they've elected to give these guys a break on our dime, and we're not even charging them any interest. And while we're doing this, they're going to send 22 cents for the March quarter to each one of their stockholders. So when is the board going to start really looking at what's best, in the best interest of our township taxpayers and residents? It's a question that is difficult to answer because I haven't seen them act in our best interest as of yet. And that's because they have their own agenda. So now, I'm going to try to wade through all this. It's going to be very, very confusing, perhaps, but I'll try to do my best. Like I said, this whole thing starts at about 38 minutes into the video, and the whole conversation lasts for about 36 minutes. And it results into... I'll give you the results before I start everything, and it's pretty amazing. Near the end of this crazy conversation, Mr. Spees makes a motion at about 1 hour 11 minutes and 52 seconds into their meeting, and he amends his motion that he made. He says, "I'm asking KCBA to submit a proposal to us explaining where we are at, their hourly rate, and to get us to where we can make a decision." This was seconded by Greg Gaultier, and all four of the Boys Club voted yes. Michelle Kircher voted no. Now, did you hear what I said? He wants KCBA to explain to them where they are at. They don't know where they're at? Now, Spees has been on the board, this is his third year, as I mentioned. Casadis has been on about twice as long as that, and they don't know where they're at? To me, this is really incredible. What have they been doing? Well, I can tell you what Spees has been doing. The first year I saw him on the board, for the over 12 months I saw him, he was pretty much sleeping. And the only time he woke up is when they were talking about closing the golf course. Then he volunteered to do whatever he had to do to keep it open, even providing his own personal funds if it was necessary. Casadis, the boy, Casadis, he likes to... he'll tell us he's a big businessman, he's got 20 years of experience, but that's not true. He doesn't know what he's... he's a glorified warehouse clerk. And with these two knuckleheads running our township, this is where we're at. And when you listen to this deliberation for 36 minutes, you're going to feel like you've just watched a new TV program called The Knuckleheads. Because if you don't laugh at this, it's going to make you cry. It's that bad. So I don't know, this motion, and it came after a previous motion where he's just as elusive as to what they're going to do. I mean, Mr. Spees's motions are like a paragraph long, you know? But explain to them... they want KCBA to explain to them where they're at, and then help them make a decision. Well, you'll hear, as I go through this, that KCBA was contracted in 2016 to do the same thing, evaluate our current facilities and give us a plan. Well, whatever that plan was, I guess it wasn't good enough because they never went with it. But now they're doing the same thing over again. They're hiring the same firm, as I predicted last week that this is what would happen. KCBA is connected with Granger, probably some of the other special interest groups that are behind this. And also, KCBA has a vendor called Simone Collins. Simone Collins is the organization that brought it to the attention of Granger and Vanderland. "Hey, you can sell the sewer plant, you'll have all kinds of money to do whatever you want." And they came up with the plans to do that. They also came up with the plans to develop the township, and I posted that on Nextdoor. Everybody can see it. If you're not on Nextdoor, go to ExeterUnited.com. I also have the plans posted there. If you can't find them, contact me. If you have questions, contact me. I will talk to you, I will tell you what I see, my opinion, and then you can derive your own opinion. But it's just... this meeting is just incredible. So we have that. So in the beginning of this discussion, at 38 minutes and 26 seconds, Joe Staub's the first one to chime in. Now, Joe didn't do a bad job, you know? He sounds good, but we'll see if he carries on this way because the Boys Club will have their way, and the leader of the Boys Club is a boy, 43-year-old John Casadis. Now, I'm 21 years older than he is, he's senior, and actually, all the other board members on the board supervisors are substantially older than he is. But he thinks he knows it all. He's like the old Jerry Blavat, right? He's the geezer with the heater and the red-hot sauce, but he's none of those things. He's just a mockingbird. So, well, Joe says right off the bat, "Come now to shoots." He states he will not vote in favor of selecting an architect now. And you'll hear this consistent theme from all the supervisors. He's concerned about our current financial situation. Joe thinks that, from a cost standpoint, he feels we do not have the financing lined up. Now, that comment concerns me. We've got this 40 million in the bank. Are they considering going out and getting bonds? What financing needs to be lined up for the Promenade? Is it going to cost more than 40 million? So that comment really kind of shook me a little bit, and I'd like to know more about this concept of not having the financing lined up. Joe also... I'm in the same group as Joe as far as this is concerned. He questions the need for a community center. Now, for me, I think the community center and the swimming pool are just diversionary tactics so that we talk about those things, assuming that everything else is going to happen. So I don't think we're going to have a community center. There's no room up there for that. And the swimming pool, well, we'll talk about that later, but I don't think any of us want the swimming pool. We have two outside swimming pools in the area, in Antietam and over here at Crestwood. We also have an indoor swimming pool at Gold's Gym. I don't think we need to compete with them. But also, back to Joe Staub. Joe says that he's not clear on how much square... how much space we need, square feet. And he's absolutely right on. Dave Spees brings up the same issue. He doesn't know if it's, you know, we need 12 acres or 17 acres or whatever his comment was, something in that nature, because we have seven acres where we're at now. And then they want to bring up the fire police, the ambulance, a community center. Well, okay, some of that 16 acres is not usable, it's not buildable. So how are they going to get all this stuff and parking and everything else in 16 acres? The answer to that question is simple: they won't. And if they do kind of shove it in there, it's going to cost us even more money. So Joe brings this up, and he's one of the few that said this. If any of the others did, I overlooked it. But he favors looking into other options. He believes a lot of commercial space will become available, and I agree with that. As more people start working at home, some of these businesses that were closed because of COVID-19 will never open up again. But we... the smart thing to do if we need more space is to lease it from other commercial vendors. That way, we can always contract or expand as our needs grow. But if we spend $40 million building a facility at the Promenade, we're limited to that space unless we go out and lease other space. So the cheapest, most efficient way is to lease space, use that for our government, and that way, if we start shrinking government, or it has to expand, we can always add more, and leasing for us will be less costly than building it. I believe to be the case. And I think that's what Joe Staub is saying. There's going to be a lot of commercial space out there, and when that happens, when you have a glut of commercial space, we can lease it very cheaply. Joe Staub agrees with me that the public needs to be involved, and they're not involving us. Dave Spees and John Casadis are locking us out. We should have a public town hall meeting before anything else is done. Now, Clarence Hamm and Gaultier don't agree with that. But look, we should have the ability to present to them what we feel about this. You know, what's going to happen, how we feel it should be... we should proceed on this, and get our input first. It doesn't cost anything to do this, Dave Spees, but hear us out. Give us a voice in our community, because it's clear, as people watch this 36-minute vignette, that you guys don't know what you're doing, and maybe we could give you some direction. I know that I could. So Mr. Staub also says there's a lot more questions that need to be answered. He's not sold on this idea, and that this is the way to go. So he wants to go the least expensive and most efficient way possible. He recommends not proceeding with the Promenade project. And you'll see later on in this video, in about 1 hour and 3 minutes, that he reinforces his notion. He says, "Now is not the right time to move forward with this large, huge plan." So that's what Joe thinks about it, and I agree with him. Now, Mr. Casadis was the second person to speak on the subject at 41 minutes and 8 seconds into this video, and he claims... first, he claimed that he had no comment, then he goes on to say he's concerned about the economy. And here is a very, very interesting comment he makes, and I want everybody to listen to this because it tells us an awful lot. Mr. Casadis says that with John Granger gone, he felt the Promenade would be gone. It was Granger's vision and foresight. Unfortunately, we don't have that on the board now. So he tells us that Granger, this guy from Bucks County, who wouldn't even live in our community, cost us millions of dollars... I mean, millions of dollars he cost the taxpayer. This Promenade thing was his vision and his foresight. And then he digs... he gives the board a dig. He says the board doesn't have that vision and foresight now. Well, maybe you don't, Mr. Casadis, but I think there is one person, and maybe two people on the board, that do have some vision. If Mr. Staub is honest in his comments in this video, I think he sees the issues, and I know Michelle Kircher does. So grow up. So he does tell us he wants to wait for the new manager, so he's okay without pushing it out. He's okay with pushing it out, but you'll see how this changes later on. He claims we should pursue the fire station. And the problem with that is, their plan is to build the fire station at the Promenade. So if he wants to wait on the Promenade, but he wants to push the fire station, that has to be somewhere else. And here's an interesting thing we have to understand. Mr. Casadis loves to tell us that JP Mascaro gave the township a donation of $1 million for the fire department, Firehouse. That is not true. Not true. Not even part of it is true. He gave us... he's going to give us $200,000 a year for five years. When I used a discount rate of 2%, so when you figure out the current value, the present value of money, he's not giving us $1 million. He's giving us something much less than, maybe $940,000, $960,000. But this is over five years. So Casadis wants to start the project and build this thing right away. Well, hey, if he's going to extend it out five years, I think we should wait five years. The other thing is, we got the Fox in charge of the hen house. Mr. Mascaro's been assigned to generate donations for the fire station. And so I say, "That's great. You know, you've got five years to get your donations together, and we've got five years to actually make solid plans for this fire station they want to build." And it's been recommended that it goes where the K-9 location is now. But I'm concerned that they're going to combine both fire stations, the Reifton and the Stonersville. That's a big problem to me in terms of looking at the scope of how it affects our township. Because if we move Stonersville up here, then we extend the reaction times of the Stonersville Fire Company to the other areas down that way. So if they want to build a fire station, that's fine, but it should only be, I think, for the Reifton company right now. And we need to keep the Stonersville where it's at. That's the smart thing to do. So it looks like, you know, it's at different times... I'll go through what Mr. Casadis has been doing here. At 57 minutes and 30 seconds into the meeting, he starts talking about the school swimming pool. They have a swimming program. Exeter Township has a swimming program, but no pool. And he says he's had discussions with the school of this, and this is a discussion he brings up during a period where Gaultier brings up... someone came to him about having a swimming pool in the rec center. Can you imagine that? So he thinks that swimming pool is a good idea. And he also mentions later on about how he wants to engage someone to look at the current facilities. And what he's getting at, and we'll get to this, I'll mention this too, is that while he's saying this, this early in the meeting, he's moving to get KCBA in as the architect. And as I mentioned it in the beginning, I told you what the final motion was, and we do have KCBA now, doing exactly the same work they did in 2016. Mr. Casadis also talks about selling our current facility. He says it has a high value, and they plan to sell it, and claims it will pay a lot of the Promenade cost. I don't know how he's going to swing that deal. I guess, sell it after we develop the Promenade? I don't know. So he also says we have to start gathering data. He says this about an hour and 5 minutes and 28 seconds into the meeting. So now he says we have to start gathering data. Earlier, he complained that the board never gets anything done. And he suggested picking an architect at an hourly rate. And this is more evidence where he's going with KCBA. So, and he asked Greg if getting an architect is getting more information. And, you know, I don't understand Greg's comment, but I'll tell you what he says. He says, "Greg says that that's just going to provide information." So I don't know if that means that it's not going to help them make a decision. I don't know. But Casadis tells him, "Well, we're on the same page." Now, Michelle Kircher chimes in at this time about this conversation. She motions to table the Promenade project, seconded by Staub. But before they could take a vote, motion on the floor, Casadis makes another motion to select KCBA. And the other supervisors explained to the most senior board member that, gee, John Casadis, you can't make a motion while there's a motion on the floor. And this is my contention, and I've been saying for many, many, many... well, since I've been here, 18, 19 months. They don't know how to incorporate Robert's Rules of Order. And they claim they use it, but they don't, you know? Like a lot of other things. But the bottom line again, as you know, KCB was hired as our architect to evaluate our current facilities, and they did that in 2016. So Casadis had initially made the motion, but they never took it up. It ended up being Dave Spees that made the motion. So that's what's going on with Casadis in this very convoluted, confusing conversation that starts with not getting the architect and ends up that we do get the architect. And they never mentioned the other three architects. Not a word, unless I missed it. Now, Gaultier, or Gaultier, he's concerned. Not sure about the fire station, but he's sure about the police accommodations requiring upgrades. According to Clarence Hamm, the police accommodations... and Clarence has been with the township for over 30 years. He says the police accommodations have been renovated three times in the last 30 years, and the administration building twice. But Greg says whatever we do need, whatever we do need, we need to come up with a solution for the police, and we still need to figure what tools we need. I don't know what tools he's talking about. And then later on, in about 47 minutes into this meeting, he explains, "I just don't know." That's in about 47 minutes. And I'm going to adjust all these times and put them in the index so that you can go to them as... after I add my comment, my opinion piece. Also, in about 53 minutes, Gaultier claims, "We need more information before a town hall meeting. People need other venues, opportunities to express their opinions." Well, I still think the town hall meeting's the best way to go. We don't need to wait for you to get information. You told us that when you spoke with the architects, that would give you the information you need. You have a request for professional services, an RFP, which details pretty much what you want to do at the Promenade. Those are the details. Let's have the town hall meeting and talk about that. And then the residents of this township can tell you whether we like the idea or not. But you're not letting us communicate with you. Your claim that we need more venues and we need to express our opinions, I think, are falling on deaf ears on the board because you're just not allowing us to communicate with you. I'm limited. Everybody's limited to three minutes or less, and only if our tone... And only if our tone is, uh, is polite, and we don't say anything that Mr. Spees or Mr. Casadis, uh, uh, won't like. So, you know, and Greg, you'll hear Greg talking throughout this 36 minutes, and he brings up a group that's interested in the indoor pool. This is when it first comes up. And he, in the rec center. And he claims that, that people came to him and, and expressed their interest in having a pool. And then later on, he says that the person, so maybe it's just one person, and maybe he just, uh, uh, you know, added a plural there, but it doesn't want to come to a town hall meeting, and I don't know why not. And then during that conversation, Ms. Kircher points out the cost to maintain an indoor swimming pool. And the fact that we're really doing it for the school, not for the community. Community's got plenty of pools to join. So, uh, it doesn't make sense, you know? And here's the thing, she also, uh, kinda alludes to the fact that, "Look, we've got a police department that's in shambles, the facilities, the fire departments need help, the administration building needs, uh, help." And then later on, you'll hear Clarence Hamm talk about, "Well, wait a minute, the highway department, we've been having the same facilities since the 60s." So all these departments have been neglected over all these years, and they can't maintain them for some reason. And yet now they want to throw an indoor swimming pool into, uh, the formula, and like, they're gonna be able to take care of that. Uh, I think it's a bad idea, and again, it's a diversionary tactic to stop us from focusing on the real issue, which is we need to stop this promenade program, use the assets that we have now, cut our, our overhead, eliminate. We've got employees in admin that are managers who have assistants. And those assistants have assistants. It's ridiculous, it really is. So later on, at 56 minutes, 47 seconds, Gaultier says, "People should have more opportunity to share what they are interested in." He feels that the people, he, and he was referring to the people who are interested in the pool, should be able to express what they want to see. Now, Greg, why don't we have a town hall meeting specifically to allow us to express what we want to see in this thing, if you're gonna build it? Uh, but you're telling us you don't want to have a town hall meeting until you have more information. So, but you want the pool people to be able to express their interest in an indoor swimming pool? I think it's unfair, I think it's small-minded. You're not looking at the big picture, and, uh, it's extremely biased. Uh, you should've stayed in there as a principal, buddy. I don't know how you did there, but we're looking into your departure from the Board of Town Middle School. Later on, at 1 hour and 7 minutes, you, uh, say, "We need more information to make an educated decision." That's the bottom line. Or we will continue to spin our wheels until we do something with an expert. So, this is the third person, I went through some of their comments, and the third person said, "We need more information, we need to put this on hold." Now, Ms. Kircher, the only woman on the, uh, board, and, uh, fighting hard for us against these four boys of... Okay, so she says we need a new fire station eventually. And we need, uh, she thinks that consolidating the fire stations, you know, are not a good idea because it reduces the response time, as I mentioned earlier. "We also need better police accommodations." I don't think there's any question about that. Uh, but why is this all of a sudden becoming a topic? I mean, what, what have they been doing the past five years? We need to ask them about that. But Michelle brings up some good points, just like Joe Staub did. She feels we need to do a study, uh, regarding what are the best locations for access, or ingress and egress. Uh, uh, in fact, we need to do traffic studies. The ver- very first thing we need to do at the promenade is do a traffic study. I mean, some people have told me that if they build what they want to build, there's not gonna be enough parking spaces there. You know, the, the local court system's going to be up there. It's, it's gonna be crowded. She does not recommend the rec center, so she's, she's with, uh, Mr. Staub on that. But who knows? You know, Spees and Casadis could talk these guys into anything, and then it's just four against one. She's concerned about the future financial status, it's questionable, you know, and I think everyone is. She wants to place the promenade project on hold, okay? And Spees interjects at this point in her conversation, which she had the floor, but Spees interjected about previous studies, the four years ago by KCBA, where no, but no action was taken. We don't even, maybe the plans weren't good enough. But again, as you find out at the end of this 36-minute conversation, they end up hiring them again to do the same thing they did four years ago. Isn't that what Einstein said, that that's the definition of insanity? Doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result? That's the feeling I got as I watched these guys debating. So, I think they should stop everything, because they've got a thing out, a motion to go KCB deal. I think they should put a hole in everything and go back and review those, those plans. And review it with the public, tell us what's in those plans. Finally, Mr. Spees, he's the last one to give his comments and tell us where it's at. And he starts out at 47 minutes and 19 seconds, telling us, he agrees with some of the comments. Police and fire is a priority. It needs upgrade in space. Okay, nothing new there. Uh, he said the 2016 plans were created for our current site to address fire and police, but it was never costed out. Those plans were done by KCBA, surprised? So, I'm asking you today, Dave, why aren't you following up and taking a look at those old plans? Why are we paying them to do the same job? You know, have things changed that drastically from four years ago? Because according to Mr. Casadis, the board never does anything. So I'm, I'm kinda confused on what might have changed. At about 49 minutes, he makes a clear statement, that the decision will be made with the public. Now, Dave, I don't want you to forget this, because you, you know, you forgot whether a vote was taken earlier in this meeting, or maybe later in the meeting. So somewhere in the meeting of, of May 26th, uh, you asked a question, "Have we voted on that yet?" And you have a tendency to forget things. And, uh, I don't want you to forget this. So you can always go to your video on your, on the township's YouTube site. At 49 minutes and 17 seconds, Mr. Spees, you make a clear statement that the decision will be made with the public, okay? So, also, Spees talks about the fact that, in his mind, the promenade is difficult to return to the tax rolls. And Casadis chimes in, and he agrees with this. And I say, "Baloney." These guys have no business experience, they have no idea what's going on. There's a guy in Reading that just started a new, uh, open-air mall, and he's got people in there. The thing is, the effort really wasn't made to fill those stores. You need to, we need to put money into it to upgrade everything. But once it's upgraded, we already have seven tenants. We could get other tenants in there. It's just a matter of working it. I've been in business for over 40 years, I know what I'm talking about. These guys, part-timers, most of the time they're on a golf course. It's easy to say it would be difficult. Maybe to you it's difficult, but you never said it was impossible. So, uh, we should put it back on the tax rolls. And I consider the sources that say it's difficult, they're biases, they're lack of experience. And, uh, Dave will probably tell us, he, 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 he did a lab in China. Well, you know what? I watched the way you run the meetings, I watched the way you're confused about all this. I can't, unless something happened to you mentally, uh, since then, I can't believe that you were ever seriously involved in developing and creating, uh, facilities for Rahman House, Ha- Haas in China. You might've been a lab tech that was sent there to set up the lab, but that's about it, in my opinion. And, uh, so we have the seven tenants there, and we could build on that. And I have ideas on how we could do that, but they will never discuss these things with me, and they will never let me get involved. Mr. Spees also goes on to say he agrees to town hall meetings, okay? Well, when? When, Mr. Spees? When it's all done? That, because that's, that's, that's been the way that the board has operated the last several years. You make a decision, you close the deal, and then you bring us in and tell us what it's all about. Not getting our input. You say you're fine with waiting. And, uh, you know, you want, you want to issue a new amended RFP, and this is where KCB came in. And they claim that there's, there's many, you claim there's many unanswered questions, and you don't know what to do. So here's the fifth member of the board stating they're confused, they're, they don't have enough information, and they don't know what to do. And these people are controlling our township, and we got, the end of 2019, had over $56 million in bank accounts. At about an hour and 8 seconds into this meeting, Spees says he doesn't think we are in a position to do anything right now. And then a little bit after that, he talks about this one architect, KCBA, at an hourly, he wants to get them at an hourly basis because they have so many questions that they want to present to them, and he doesn't know. And then he says, "Do we need 12 acres or 16 acres?" They're not even know, they don't even know if they have enough capacity for what they want to do. And in the end, Spees leads the way with a long and drawn-out motion, which I, I explained at the beginning of my op- opinion piece, that they decided that they're going to, and it was passed. And I'll read it again as I slowly fade out of here. His amendment to the motion is, "Ask KCBA to submit a proposal to us explaining where we are at, their hourly rate, to get us to where we can make a decision." Now, they're asking an awful lot from KCBA to go into their minds and determine where they're at, and then to give them all the information that they don't seemingly have now to make a decision. Uh, it just, it's just, uh, mind-bending. And, uh, so of course, the Boys Club all said yes to this. Even, even, even Mr. Stout, uh, Staub, who said that he wasn't gonna pick an architect tonight, ends up picking an architect. So we know that once they do this, uh, second time doing the work on the existing buildings, that they're going to say, "Well, we've done work with KCBA, we feel comfortable with them, they know what we're doing." So they're gonna get awarded the contract to do the promenade. Unless we can convince these guys that the promenade is the wrong way to go for, uh, uh, public, uh, buildings. And I hope we could do that. I don't know if we will. It's gonna be a long shot. And, uh, it's really... It's really been an exhausting time watching this, this video. You're gonna see that, you're probably gonna have to take it in pieces, because that's how difficult it is. It is excruciatingly painful to watch these guys deliberate over this, and the nonsense that you will hear over and over again. And then you'll watch, as first everybody's in agreement, "We can't do this," and then you'll watch as both Casadis and Spees bring the whole thing around full tilt, as, as, as Ms. Kircher says, "You're just going back to the beginning." And of course, Casadis disagrees with her. Uh, both Casadis and Spees will often interrupt what she's talking about because they want to demean her in the public's eye, I believe, that's my opinion. But anyway, they take us all the way back to the beginning, where Spees and Casadis support hiring KCBA. And they do. Without any mention during this conversation about the other three architects that were interviewed. And I think that also demonstrates to us their lack of professionalism, their lack of concern, and their lack of doing their own homework. I had my favorite, it was the only Burke's County architect from why I'm missing. And maybe if you've watched it, you have your own favorite. But I'm not in favor of the way our board is working for us. And I hope that Mr. Spees and Mr. Casadis will consider resigning from the board, because you're both terrible leaders, you both are biased. At least one of you is working for somebody else, maybe both of you are. But, uh, we know what Mr. Casadis said about, "This was Granger's vision. This was, was his foresight." Well, Mr. Granger's not a part of our community. And the money that he was going to spend is not his money. Although, when we look at what you say about the, uh, rent, uh, debate, uh, I don't think you consider this the town pet taxpayers' money. I think in some ways you think this is your money. But I want to thank, uh, anyone who watches my opinion piece, uh, for putting up with, uh, my opinions at the time. And I encourage you to watch everything, think about what I said, and please form your own opinion. But at the very least, once you do form your opinion, or you have some comments you want to make, send them in to the board supervisors. You'll find their email addresses on Exeter Township's website. And tell them how you feel about what they're doing. Thank you very much.
Okay, we're good.
Ready to go?
Yep.
All right, I'd like to call to order the May 26, 2020 meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Please rise for the pledge of the flag.
The pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands.
Which stands.
One nation, under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Also, ladies and please stay standing. Uh, we're gonna have a moment of silence for the death of one of our fallen firefighters. Our thoughts and prayers go out to his family. Thank you. Oh, Mr. Gaultier.
Here.
Ms. Kircher.
Here.
Mr. Casadis.
Here.
Mr. Staub.
Here.
And I'm here, Dave Spees. Um, presentations. I think we're gonna, we're gonna start with the presentations. Um, so Will, you wanna take over and talk about the group homes in Exeter Township? I think you're gonna give a little overview on some of the history here.
Yep, so, uh, good evening to the board. Um, I appreciate you, uh, letting me explain, uh, you know, to the best of our ability, what might be going on with, uh, some concerns regarding group homes in the township. Uh, first, I like to start, um, by maybe explaining zoning, uh, for the, some of the board members, as well as the public that do not exactly know what zoning, uh, is. Um, so zoning helps to regular, regulate for certain, uh, activities and uses can and cannot go in the township. Um, there are, um, almost a dozen, um, zoning districts that the township has created. And in each of these districts, um, certain uses are permitted, certain uses are not permitted. And then, um, this helps in making sure that, you know, uses and, um... The goal of the Township zoning ordinance is to encourage the most appropriate use of land and buildings while working to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the township's public residents. So there are several zoning districts within the ordinance that cater specifically to residential dwellings. These differ slightly mainly by lot size, setbacks, and the type of dwellings that are permitted in each zone. For example, two of the larger residential zones in the township are the SR1, which is the suburban residential, and suburban residential 3. Suburban residential 1 permits single-family homes, while the suburban residential 3 permits single-family detached, single-family semi-detached and townhomes. So that kind of brings us into a segue of the issue of group homes. Group homes have a certain number of unrelated persons that are typically housed in a dwelling. Concerns have been raised by several residents across, you know, over the last, you know, several years about the possibility of regulating these facilities. The police department, the codes office, have been involved in many of these discussions. The police department occasionally have to go out and investigate some complaints that concerned residents have. Now, a lot of these concerns raised by the residents are valid and serious in nature. So we do take that very serious, and I believe, you know, the chief of police is probably aware of these concerns. They have appeared to have been getting a little better over the years with discussions of the certain, certain group home groups. But, you know, this does not just affect Exeter Township, it also affects other municipalities in Berks County, other municipalities, you know, across the country. So, you know, we're not alone in this struggle that we seek to clarify the questions we Many courts in the country have heard cases involving group home providers and local municipalities that have tried to regulate where they can and cannot locate. And a very large number of these cases have concluded that an ordinance that restricts the unrelated persons from living together has a disparate impact on disabled individuals and therefore possibly violates the Federal Housing Act, Americans with Disabilities Act, and the equal protection clause of the Fourteenth Amendment. So that brings us to, you know, obviously a slippery slope that we try not to go down. You know, when you're treating somebody differently compared to those in the rest of the population, you know, you get into the discrimination accusation then. So group homes, they do not constitute institutions, correctional facilities, alcohol and drug treatment centers, or halfway houses. And to my knowledge, the individuals that reside in these facilities do not have any violent behavior disorders, because I believe that is one of their policies as a group Now, the township does permit, in several zoning districts, single-family dwellings. The group homes have claimed that they fall under the single-family dwelling, and that classifying any, and that classifying a certain number of unrelated persons based on disabilities or any behavioral disorders, or, I'm sorry, any other disorders can fall under, in a discrimination. Now, Sam and Sam's office have been involved in this, you know, over the last several years, so he might have a little better understanding, you know, if I missed anything. Unfortunately, I don't, I don't think there are, you know, many avenues for the township to take at this point.
Yeah, Will, I mean, I think you stated it pretty accurately. I don't know about the issue with the violence. I know historically there have been incidents where there have been folks who have had violent issues that have been addressed by the police. And each, my understanding is each of the people who reside in these group homes, generally speaking, have a plan that's been approved by, you know, one of the state agencies, and that plan is followed in terms of how they're, is to be followed in terms of their care, and each person is different in terms of what care they need. So I, you know, I don't know, there probably, historically, there certainly have been folks who have had violent incidents, and I think you're also right that the numbers have gone down. When I can remember, a few years ago, when this was a topic that was discussed quite a bit at board meetings and there was some litigation around it, we had gotten complaint, police complaints on a very frequent basis, some of which I think I would characterize as very serious. And the chief can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I'm not, I mean, I know there are still occasionally some police reports filed with respect to group homes, but it's, seems to me, at least as far as I'm aware, not anything near as significant as it was, you know, in the past. In terms of the law, I think you stated it accurately, generally the bottom line is you can't distinguish between group homes and normal residential homes. That's where you run into trouble with the Fair Housing Act and with the, you know, the constitutional type discrimination claims that you were talking about. So, you know, what's good for a residential dwelling generally needs to be good for a group home. Now, there, in terms of what's occurring in Exeter Township, you know, you have one provider that has approximately 40 group homes in the township, and you have other providers, and I forget what the exact number is, but as I recall, it's over 50. I think it was around 55, and I don't know if there's any changes at this point or not, which is a lot for, you know, for a municipality. That's not, there's nothing you can do about that at the local level. That's all regulated by the state. And they, this was, we had a meeting a few years ago with the folks, the state, talked about some things, and what we were told was that the, certainly it's not the state, the idea is that these group homes are put into communities and so that the folks can sort of be blended into the community and become a part of the community. The idea isn't to create, you know, a community in and of itself of group homes, because that's not the, not the, what everyone's hoping for. I think generally speaking, the policy of the state agency is that, at least what was said, was explained to us, was that when they're approving locations for group homes, they don't want them to be contiguous. And how they defined contiguous, at least at the time, and this is going back a few years now, was they don't want their property lines to touch. That does, you know, meaning, certainly meaning they could be across the street from one another, but they wouldn't want it to be, you know, your next-door neighbor where the property line touches. And there's, and there's nothing you can do about the location of them on the local level. But in terms of, if there are concerns that are addressed about, obviously, police concerns, that's something that can be addressed by the police department. If there are parking issues or things like that that we would address with other residential homeowners, you can address them with a group home just the same. There are some facilities in the township that may not be group homes, they may be something other, they may be something like a personal care home, which is much larger. They may be something like a, what they call a nurse modifier facility, which is a group home that has in it the capability to be almost, this is, this is a real, this is a real oversimplification, but like a mini hospital in some ways. So, you know, those are different, and maybe those can be regulated differently, but by and large, when you're talking about the standard group home, which you have probably 50 or so in the community, you have to treat them like you would treat any residential dwelling. Whatever, however you would, you know, if there's a parking issue, any issue like that with them, just you treat them the same way you would a residential homeowner in that respect. But in terms of the approval to locate and operate, you know, you can't do anything really about that other than register concerns that you may have, you know, if appropriate, at the appropriate times with the, you know, regulatory body. That's, that's pretty much the gist of it, but I'm happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Sam, so they're not classified as a business?
That, well, from a business privilege standpoint, that might be, that's a different question, Dave, but in terms of, in terms of their, from a zoning standpoint, the answer is no. From a zoning standpoint, they are treated, the cases, and this is, as Will described it accurately, and this includes our circuit, the Third Circuit, it's federal, these are federal issues, by and large, there's some state issues attached, but they, the Third Circuit Courts have concluded that you cannot specifically regulate, at least in terms of location and operation, group homes differently than you would a residential home. So that doesn't mean necessarily that they may not be subject to other, other regulations that would apply to businesses, Dave, but that does, that does mean that from a zoning standpoint, you can't say you cannot operate in a, in a residential neighborhood because you're a group home, quote-unquote, business. That's not going to fly.
Okay. Thanks. Any other questions?
We did circulate a few years ago, a couple of memos on this when this was a hot-button issue, and I will, I'll circulate that to the board as well. And if, this current board, obviously, it's a new board, and if there are questions about it that you want to address at the next board meeting, I'm happy to do that, or, you know, if you want to give me a call or something, you're welcome to do so.
Very good. Thanks, Will. Thanks, Sam.
Thanks for the info.
Thank you.
So moving on, Laurie, public comments on agenda items.
So the first one is from Terry Riley, and the comment is related to the number one under unfinished business, select architect for Promenade Shopping Center.
Once again, it appears that you are going ahead with your grand plan for the promenade, the idea of which was created under a previous board. If I remember correctly from the interviews, after a firm is selected, they will start preliminary work and eventually submit cost estimates. I was concerned during the interviews, because all of the firms discussed their proposals in terms of township use, police, fire, business, et cetera, and no one discussed refurbishment and resale. I do not understand how this election can be done without a clear idea of the end use of the property, township use, or refurbishment and resale. I believe that the residents of the township should decide what we do with the promenade property. Instead of a survey that asks, how would you use a community center, the question should be, should we spend our tax dollars on new facilities, or should we resell the property?
Anyone want to comment, or?
Comment during the, during the agenda item.
Okay. Yeah, we're going to cover that. All right. Should we move on?
Okay. Next is John Carmelo, and he is also commenting on the select architect for Promenade Shopping Center item.
Again, the board is pushing ahead with the promenade. There still has not been a lockdown meeting to discuss the efficacy of this project and its value to the residents and taxpayers of Exeter. That is in violation of Pennsylvania Sunshine Act 65 PA.C.S., paragraph, paragraph 701, 716. One, what is the purpose of selecting an architect now? At the May 14 meeting, the four firms presented a loose overview of their ideas and capabilities. This was based on the RFP of November 13, 2019, which was never sufficiently presented to the public. Specifications of this RFP are possibly in violation of Pennsylvania Act 34 of 1973.
Sam, any comments?
I mean, my, from the Sunshine Act standpoint, as far as I know, everything that's been going on with respect to the architect has been done in public, and I publicly, I duly noticed public meetings, so I'm not aware of anything that would be a Sunshine Act violation. I don't know if the comments alleging that there's some backroom dealing going on or something, but I'm certainly not aware of that either, so. The Sunshine Act requires that business, you know, all township business be done in public, which I believe you guys are pretty careful to do.
Good. Again, anyone want to comment, or we're going, I guess we're going to be discussing this under that item on the agenda? All right.
And he has two others, so he's also commenting on, under new business, authorize advertisement of June Board of Supervisors meetings, and also consider applications for rental relief for May 2020 for the Promenade Shopping Center tenants. So I'll play both of those at the same time.
Okay.
One, authorize advertisements of June Board of Supervisor meetings. The lockdown should be over before the June 22 meeting. Why is this meeting still in virtual mode? This should be advertised on a to-be-determined mode based on the COVID situation at the time. Eight, consider applications for rental relief for May 2024 Promenade Shopping Center tenants. The income from this fund is township revenue and therefore belongs to the taxpayers. Disbursements of such income is tantamount to spending taxpayer funds. Before you approve this resolution, have you answered the questions I asked at the last meeting? One, one, some of the businesses in the promenade have been open and operating during the pandemic period. How has their business been affected? Two, two, have any of the businesses applied for state or federal COVID assistance funding? Three, three, do the businesses have business interruption insurance to cover their losses? If not, then why not? Should taxpayers pay for bad business decisions? Unless you can answer those questions, you still have not done due diligence in gathering sufficient facts upon which to make a proper decision.
Any comments there? I mean, certainly on the supervisor meetings, as far as virtual or not, I mean, I think we're going to be yellow. I doubt we're going to be green. So there's still going to be restrictions on public gatherings. Other people can comment on that. I'm not an expert on the insurance thing with relief, but I know COVID's not covered by many businesses, just from the reports I've been seeing, but I don't know, Sam or someone else could, could comment on that, but I mean, I think that was the reason for us not doing a blanket approval for forgiveness of rental payments. We were doing a case-by-case basis, and that's what the agenda item indicates. Any comments from anyone?
Yeah, discuss it when the item comes up.
Okay. Very good.
Okay. And there is one more on the agenda item, and this is David Hughes, and he is commenting on also the architect.
My comments are concerning the choosing of the architect. Is it really necessary to choose now, considering that Mr. Spees clearly stated you will not spend any money at this time, so why is it an agenda item today? Mr. Spees promised a town hall meeting with the community after interviewing the architects. Here, it seems once again the public is cut out and our voices will not be heard. It is a foregone conclusion that KCBA will be the firm that you will hire. They have on their list of associates Simone Collins, who we know is a known associate of our former manager. Simone Collins is currently working for the supervisors in various capacities related to landscape. related to landscape and design and park grants. This could be a conflict of interest. The disbursements you plan to vote on tonight contain payment to Simone Collins of one thousand six hundred dollars. There is one architect from Berks County on the shortlist. After the COVID nineteen lockdown is raised, then we should have the town hall meeting that has been promised. The feedback I am getting is that this is too expensive, and the public would like to see the property returned to the tax rolls. Not only should the decision be tabled, but the promenade project should be stopped until a town hall meeting can be held. We are looking at spending twenty-five dollars to thirty-five million dollar dollars on this project. This should be considered and carefully deliberated, and the public must be included.
Comments, anyone? I guess, yeah, it's the same we're going to be covering. We're going to have a probably a, quite a discussion on that when we get to the item. All right. Move on. Regular, any other, that's it, Laurie?
That was it.
All right, regular approvals, minutes, the May eleventh, twenty twenty meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve them for May eleventh.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Minutes of the May fourteenth special meeting on twenty twenty.
I'll make a motion to approve the May fourteenth special meeting minutes.
I'll second.
That was you, Greg?
Someone else did. It should be someone else.
Someone second.
Joe.
Joe, thanks, Joe. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Disbursements of the May twenty-six, twenty twenty meeting.
I move that we approve the disbursements for the May twenty-six, twenty twenty meeting, um, or the disbursements as listed.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? I think you had a few topics, Joe.
Yeah, Jen, if you could just, uh, uh, comment and explain, uh, with Cody Computers, uh, the Cohen Lund Group, um, uh, just to go over, explain, um, uh, the legal bills, uh, for this month with Fox Rothschild, and also the relationship with Landis Mechanical. Thank you.
Sure. Uh, Cody Computers, that is our annual software maintenance for some of the police software that the police department uses. Uh, Cohen Law Group, the one thousand four hundred fifty-three dollars was the first payment in the Comcast Cable franchise agreement negotiation. So that's the, the payment to have them get started on that negotiation. Landis Mechanical, uh, this is our quarterly maintenance contract that we have for the HVAC, HVAC systems at the township building, the DJ's office, library, Dunn Center, and the Reading Country Club. Uh, the Fox Rothschild legal bill for March was thirty-one thousand four hundred dollars. Um, there was some, there were some expenses on there for the Reading Country Club and for the wastewater plant. The Reading Country Club, uh, some questions, legal license questions related to the pandemic and operating the pro shop under the, uh, the COVID pandemic. Um, the wastewater treatment, uh, was helping to collect, uh, account receivable balances, sheriff sales information, and lien information, placing liens and satisfying liens and such.
Okay. Thank you, Jen. Just, uh, just a follow up regarding the computer software. Is that, is that just an automatic renewal? Do we put that out for bid? Do we, uh, check that price periodically? How does that work?
As far as I know, that's an automatic renewal for, uh, the software that they have, that they currently use. Um, like most other softwares, to just renew, we don't really put those out for bid or look for new softwares unless, of course, we're displeased or think we can get something else. Uh, Chief could probably comment. I'm not even sure if there is another software for what Cody does for them.
And that's our, our records management system, um, that the police department use. It's currently tied in, uh, numerous police departments, uh, in the county, uh, use it as well. Uh, it's a reoccurring yearly expense. Um, that system is tied into other police departments as well. So it's sort of a comprehensive, uh, a record management system, uh, the police department has used for, uh, for years.
Thank you both.
Very good. Thanks, everyone. Thanks, Jen. Um, so we had a first and a second. Any further discussion on disbursements? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Treasurer's report for April twenty twenty.
I move that we approve the treasurer's report for April twenty twenty. It's subject audit.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Just, uh, Jen, just a question. You can see that some of the revenues are down that we had talked about. Have we received any additional feedback as far as the COVID-related, like earned income tax and business privilege tax, things of that nature? As far as the percentage, we feel we may be off. Have you received any additional information from PSATs or other places?
Uh, no additional information. Uh, Burke EIT had provided, and I think I talked about this a meeting or two ago, some information on earned income tax. Uh, they are projecting, we get a payment, uh, June first or second, we should get our first quarter payment, uh, payments for the, the money collected in the first quarter. They're, uh, projecting little to no impact for that payment because, of course, people were working for the majority of the first quarter. Uh, the payments that come in in September and December, those are for, of course, the second and third quarters, where there is more of an impact. They're anticipating up to thirty percent of a decrease in that payment, uh, just based upon unemployment figures. Uh, business privilege tax is really hard to kind of wrap your arms around not knowing who's closed, who's operating online, all those sorts of things. Um, so we'll just have to kind of play that one by ear of what, what kind of payments we're going to get and how much it's going to be impacted.
Okay. Thank you. On a positive note, I talked to Charlie Diamond. He, um, he said that the, the county tax bill were running at eighty-eight percent, um, through the, um, through the end of the month. Uh, again, the big lenders send in the escrow payments, so we get most of those, the taxes are escrowed, whether the customer pays it or not. Um, last year we were at ninety-one percent, so it's only off slightly. So that was good news.
Good. Thank you. We didn't vote, did we?
No.
First and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it. Uh, normally with the agenda says going to unfinished business, but we have a guest joining us on item number nine on the agenda under new business on the total recycle facility. Uh, so in the interest of them being able to join into this conference, I think we're going to try to bump them up and do that now. Are you able to do that, Laurie?
Yep, he is on, and Ryan, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, perfect. Great. And Will, I don't know if you wanted to give any background on this first?
Um, so the planning commission during their May, uh, meeting, um, reviewed the, uh, application and the waiver request from, um, Total Recycle Facility. The, um, Township Engineers, um, review letter, as well as a memo from the Planning Commission has been uploaded to the, the board's workspace. Um, at this point, I would, um, maybe give the mic to, uh, Ryan. Uh, Ryan Inch is the, um, JP Mascaro engineer, um, and can explain, uh, what he is looking for at this point.
So at Total Recycle, we applied for a, a building permit addition, uh, to get a, a building permit for an addition onto the main building, and that addition's going to measure a hundred and fifty feet by forty-five feet. And our request, uh, was made to the Planning Commission for a waiver to the land development process. Uh, there's language in the zoning ordinance and in the SADO ordinance, which allows that kind of relief to be granted by the Board of Supervisors. And based on the, the fact that we've gone through land development before on this project, and the, the amount of the addition that we're putting on, uh, we believe that, uh, it's, it's minor and doesn't rise to the level of having to go through the land development process again. And we're here, we're, we're, we're here asking for, um, a waiver to the land development process as it relates to this building addition.
I could just add a few notes that was discussed at the Planning Commission meeting. Uh, plans were submitted, like Ryan mentioned, and it's a, it's a, a building addition at the rear of their facility. It's not going to be a separate accessory building. It's actually just an expansion. Our zoning ordinance has a clause that we can allow for the waiver of land development if, I believe it's twenty-five percent of, of the, an increase in the, the square footage of the building footprint or twenty-five hundred square feet, whichever is the lesser. Unfortunately, they don't meet that criteria, so they're requesting a waiver. Um, the Planning Commission in our office reviewed the plans, and we, we do have some concerns. We do support a waiver, however, we recommend some conditions that would be imposed that are outlined, um, in our May eighth review letter, as well as the May twentieth Planning Commission letter, which, which states they would need to address, um, stormwater management because they're making some slight modifications to an existing swale. Uh, address any fire prevention or safety concerns with the building to safely allow apparatus to, um, um, be able to maneuver around a building in case of a fire. Address any lighting, landscaping, or architectural issues that we have in our SADO. Obtain proper zoning and building permits, as well as addressing any comments or concerns that the township staff or its consultants may have during the, uh, review process. Though, those were the main items that we, we'd like, the Planning Commission would like to see addressed. However, they were in favor, um, of waiving that land development, um, procedure going through the Planning Commission as well as the Board of Supervisors. The plans were submitted, I believe, back in two thousand and twelve. They did address, there's not going to be an increase in traffic. They did address the environmental concerns and so forth, and since the Planning Commission felt it was a minor expansion, uh, they, they would recommend to the Board of Supervisors for consideration of granting a waiver.
Very good. Thanks, Joe. Thanks, Will. And thanks, Ryan. So you need a motion? Or discussion questions from anyone?
None for me.
I'll make a motion to, uh, consider waiver from land development process for total recycling facility expansion.
Second.
Second that?
Joe second.
No, Joe did?
Joe seconded, yep.
Okay. Very good, Joe. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it. Very good. Ryan?
Thank you very much.
Can I just say, Dave, I just want to confirm, that motion was subject to the conditions, correct?
Oh, yes. We need to amend that, to include.
I think it was.
I amend my motion to consider waiver from land development process for total recycling with the exceptions.
With the conditions that were set forth in Joe Rogowski's May eighth letter, right?
With the conditions that were set forth.
And, uh, Sam, as well as the May twentieth letter from the Planning Commission to the Board of Supervisors.
There you go. Thank you, Joe.
So you amended that, John? Joe, you're amending your second?
I amend my second, yes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Good. Thanks, Sam. All right, back to the agenda. Item number one, unfinished business, select architect for the Promenade Shopping Center. Can certainly go about one by one. I'm sure every supervisor has some comments there. Um, so whoever wants to jump in, I will say one thing from the public comment is, I certainly can't promise what the board does, and I don't recall making a promise. I think I, my comment was when we scheduled the architect interviews that we weren't spending any money to do the interviews. I can't promise or won't promise what will be done in the future. Um, so anyway, yeah, I have my comments, but someone else can open the discussion.
I'll talk though, Dave. Um, I'm, I'm not going to be voting in favor of selecting an architect now. Um, actually, one of the things that I found interesting from, uh, the presentation, uh, was finding out about, uh, the plans for our current facility, and then also too, looking at some of the other buildings that have been retrofitted that some of the architects had done. Um, some issues of concern for me, um, obviously, we're going to be down a whole bunch of money. We're going to be down a couple million dollars this year just in revenue. There's no doubt about that. And, uh, just from an overall cost standpoint of a new facility, um, I don't think we have the financing lined up. I don't, I'm not quite sure whether or not a community center should be involved. I have some concerns there. Um, I don't have a, I don't have a comfort level as far as the actual space needed. Uh, there's going to be so much commercial space available with work from home that I think a push came to shove, and if we needed a couple hundred square foot, I'm not sure that we couldn't, um, source that very easily. So at this point in time, I would be more in favor of looking at various options, including, uh, what we need, especially for fire police and for the township, uh, staff right now, what space, the amount of space we need. I liken this back to the day when we were looking at Exeter Ridge and the school board, and we opted not to go that route. I think that was the original Taj Mahal. Uh, we, we decided to go, not go that route, and what we did is we sold the current administration building and retrofitted Loush and, and didn't build or buy. And again, I'm not saying that that's the case, but I think there should be public comment. I think the public should be involved, but I also just don't feel that unless we have a lot more questions answered, that this is the direction to go. That is such a big space. Um, I was concerned when we bought it, um, and I'm concerned about converting it right now. Now, I will say that I haven't had the full, uh, tour of the fire facilities, but I have of the township offices and facilities and the police, uh, station. And we definitely need to upgrade and provide the space needed. No doubt about that. I just think that we need to do it in, um, the cheapest and most efficient way possible. So I'm, I am not, at this point in time, recommending proceeding at the Promenade.
That's it. Joe? Comments? Anyone? Joe?
I'm, I'm good. I don't, I don't have any comments right now.
No comments?
No, I'm, I mean, I think the big thing is, you know, with the economy the way it is, you know, we're definitely not where we were a year ago. Um, one of the things is I think Ranger did, as I always said, once Ranger was gone, I think the Promenade was going to be gone because he had the vision foresight that unfortunately we don't have now on the board. Now, whether it's three months from now, four months from now, with a new township manager, then I think we could get to it. I'm okay pushing it out a little bit further, but again, we are getting money for the fire station. We started to, we're at over a million dollars from Mascaro, so I think we should at least pursue where we're going to put the fire station at a minimum because, again, it's going to be the same trap that occurred many, many years ago where we had all this money and the fire station never, never got done. So we, we can't just keep punting the ball. We're going to have to start to do something. But, but I'm okay if you want to wait a little bit more till we figure out this year at least with the whole COVID and the tax dollars that aren't going to be here.
And, and John, one thing that, that plan did talk about the fire station and where that could be too. So I also looked at that across the street, which, and the chief can comment on how much that K nine facility is used. It seemed like it would, it seemed like it would mesh at least with where we're at if we could utilize the current space.
You're saying to use that space.
Correct. Yeah, that's, that's what I was thinking of. Okay. Thank you.
That makes sense. Yeah, I was thinking too, Joe, actually. You could use that space for the fire station.
Yep.
My, my comment would be this. I'm concerned, uh, My, my comment would be this, I'm concerned uh. From why I haven't had the opportunity to tour the fire department, but I'm not doubting the need is there. But I, I definitely sure the need is there for the police. And so whatever we, we do, we need to come up with a solution for that, um. You know, people talk about supporting first responders and, and it's great. To uh encourage them and thank them, but. It's even more important to support them by giving them the tools that they need to be successful. So I just feel like we really need to figure that out.
Thanks Greg. Michelle, comments?
Yes, um. I think that, I know that we need a new fire station and something for the police. But I, I, I think we need to study it more, definitely for the fire. Ask what is the best location, where are they going to have the best, best time to uh get to certain parts of the township? And um. I think that right now is definitely not the time to do it. I think um traffic studies would have to be done. I definitely don't think we need the rec center. And um. I'm not ready that we don't know what's coming up ahead in our fina- financial status, and I think we need to hold on. As much money as we can right now till we find out how this is all going to turn out. So it's not that, might have been his uh at that time. Um, what he thought should have been done, but right now, I don't think of doing anything. Because of the situation we're in.
Very good, a question for you, Michelle, I mean, it just popped into my head as you were talking about that. Fire and the police, you know, one of my comments is that, you know, I've been through these facilities. You know, we just found out that there's four to five to six years history on looking and what's needed in new facilities there, but we have a lot of new people involved here. Um, just logistic wise, I think the fire department has a pretty good feel and the police department has some experience with this. You know, at the right time, would it be worth, you know, individual meetings with the board and say, you know, a group of the police officers or a group of the fire department. To more understand, you know, what has been done in the past. Uh, when I reached out to, you know, one person from fire departments and they've been studying this for, for many years and. I was not aware of the history of that. And they do have preferences of locations and everything, so it just popped into my mind as a, you know, maybe a suggestion, I don't know when that time is right, but, you know, we should probably. Talk to some people that have been involved in this for a long time.
Right, uh, well, we, I, the most important is to have the right place for the, for the firehouse. And I understand that they have to have a place to sleep and they have to have a kitchen and uh. Said people have to realize the firemen, a lot of, uh, live there a lot of times. But um, I just think it's, it's just not the right time, yeah.
Yeah.
And we are losing out on recruits for the fire department because of our facilities being so poor. You know, we're losing out to Lancaster, to Lebanon, that they have nicer fire stations that they're able to get interns that can sleep there, so that's another. Concern I have, so my big thing is I think the fire department is what needs the most right now. All the other stuff, I think, I agree, I agree with Greg too, with the police. Um, but the fire would be number one, police would be number two, that we, we have to start thinking about doing something instead of just talking about it.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't dispute that, I just don't know, because I haven't seen the fire.
Yep. Yeah, I would suggest all you, all, all the three new supervisors go visit the fire department.
Yeah, so my comments, um, you know, a couple, similar to some of the comments we've heard already, but. The both the police and fire department as far as priority, you know, the police department definitely needs upgrades, needs space. You know, we can't be doing fingerprinting in the lunchroom and. Evidence lockers and chain of command and everything else that goes with the police department, I think, you know, we have a great, a great force and. We want to get our accreditation back and have decent facilities um to attract and retain people, same with the fire department. Um, you know, we need facilities and it's getting harder and harder to get volunteers and to get staff and. You know, when you have new fire companies, facilities springing up all around us and. You know, it's, it's difficult, uh, and I think all the leaders in our fire department will tell you that it's been very difficult to, to campaign to get new recruits. So there is an experience, you know, a history here, um. I was very, I thought it was a very interesting discussion and very glad that we had the interviews with the architects. Um, we had, we heard, I heard different. Views on use of existing buildings and, you know, going back to ground and creating new buildings and I heard. You know, try to use as much structure for cost effectiveness as necessary, but. The one thing that really did strike me was, you know, five or six years ago, we had a session and we created five or six options at the existing site. Including the, you know, fire station, standalone police station and other things that I don't think they were ever costed out, but they're intriguing to look at. Um, you know, and I guess one comment about the promenade, you've got two sites here, still in my mind, I've made this comment before. They're roughly the same market value, um, as far as returning. One of them will likely or should return back to the tax rolls, you know, one day, depending on whatever decision we make, you know, with the public. Uh, the promenade in my, my mind is very difficult to return to the tax rolls, I mean, I've heard several comments about fixing up and returning the tax rolls, well. Nobody wanted to move in there before and still nobody wants to move in there as far as.
Yeah, that's not happening.
And it was difficult to, to rent out for retail perspective, and I think that was. One vision of the past, the last year of the discussion was, you know, a township building can accommodate a less attractive space. Um, but put that aside, um, one question I have about moving forward. Is definitely agree with town hall meetings, you know, I don't know about rec center or everything else, I know what we need fire police. You know, and we need facilities, whether they're standalone or where they're located, you know, that, that's part of that discussion and that becomes. An economic discussion and what's most cost effective because, you know, we are in a, a time that we have to be careful. Um, I guess one question I have, reading back, you know, the proposals on the architects. And I'm fine with waiting because it's a difficult time as well, but as we look at that. You know, when I read through those proposals, there was hourly rates for the people we work with in those, and it was a proposal to get to a certain point not to exceed. Whatever it was thirty-five thousand dollars, and it was like a hundred and twenty dollars an hour or something for some. So when we have town hall meetings and, you know, we want to have the fire department or we want to look at different sites and gather information. You know, can we amend or review that, maybe the question for Sam, that, that RFP? To say, can we start on this on an hourly basis to do certain activities? I'm not an expert on this and I don't know how we're going to have someone involved that can help answer some of our questions. You know, whether the, the former giant can be a, a police and fire department. Building or the K nine training center can be two standalone buildings and which will cost more or less and rough ballpark figures. So I guess that would be my question is can we look at that RFP and say. Can we go, can we do certain activities on an hourly basis if we say we're probably going to work with this person? Can we invite them, when we invite them to a public meeting or whatever, is that an hourly basis, we don't have to pay them a lump sum upfront?
Well, from. I'm getting feedback. You guys, can you hear me okay, Dave?
Yep.
Alright, uh, the, the, it depends how you want to proceed, I mean, look, these are professional services, which means that you're not. You know, you're not required to go through a formal uh proposal or bidding process, now you've chosen to do that here, so. By doing that, you know, you do have to give everyone sort of a fair shot at responding to the, to the proposal, if what you're talking about though. Is that the board is, is now inclined to maybe go a different way than what was initially contemplated with the RFP was issued. Yeah, that's fine, I mean, you, you guys can make that decision and you can either issue if you wanted to another. RFP or you could say, you know, having gone through the process and done the interviews. Uh, you know, we want to talk to this person or, or this person and this person or whatever you guys want to say. Um, but hey, we want you to look, consider looking at these additional things in this way also and see if they're willing to do it. Uh, because of the nature of the service is professional, you're not, you know, you do, you do have more leeway than you would in a. In a different circumstance, but, you know, you do have to be careful to make sure that we complete this first process, you know, giving everyone the, and I think you have to date.
Yes.
You know, a fair opportunity.
Yeah, we haven't made a selection, but I guess my question was, it can, is it possible, you know, if we were to make a selection that we can say. We're going to vote with this person, but we're not necessarily signing a contract.
If you wanted to do that, you could certainly do that, I, again, whatever this person would want to do, I mean, you know, just like anything else, when you're. When you're dealing with somebody, you, you know, you'd have to say, hey, we want to, we want to do X, Y, and Z, and they'd either be willing to do it or they, or they wouldn't be.
You know.
But there's, yeah, there's no, you're not precluded necessarily from, from having those discussions.
Okay, now I just wanted to ask the question, so, I mean, I heard, I mean, I've heard from everyone, everyone's heard, saying we have a lot of. Different opinions, um, any further comments or do we just want to. Sleep on this?
Well, I, the, the one thing I'd say is. You know, I, I kind of agree with what Dave was, Dave was talking about, I think we should chew on it a little bit, but. I think we need to have more information before we have a town hall meeting. And then besides the town hall meeting, I think people need to have other. Venues or opportunities to express their opinions rather than just a town hall meeting. And we need to, to advertise that, I know, I know there's a group of people that are interested in a pool. Being in a recreation center, but that same person told me that they don't really want to go to town hall meetings. You know, they would prefer a survey. Um, I'm not big on necessarily a survey unless it's open ended, but I think what we, one thing we need to do is. Uh, give people more than one vehicle to express themselves, because right now a town hall meeting. You know, who knows? When we'll be able to even do that, you're, you're looking, you're, I, I'm not. Lining up to go to any large group gatherings, I, I'll tell you that personally, that's not something I'm going to do right now.
Well, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Michelle.
I've seen uh, when the, this town, the township building was um remodeled. And I got here after they already planned it. And basically all they did was put in, what, thirty-two or thirty-three doors? And there wasn't much, it didn't really give us a lot more room. And that's why you have to take your time and think. And it's also, you have to talk to the community, community and say, do you want practicality or do you want bells and whistles? And um, the pool part, if you go around the county. And see, most pools are closing up because the, it's too expensive to run. And as we, if we build anything, we have to look about far in the future. You know, what's this going to cost us to operate, do we have the money to afford all this and keep it up? And that's something that usually, that usually um doesn't happen. And then another board gets caught with having to do all the repairs or whatever. So I guess I'm more practical than most, but um, I, I've just seen it happen too many times and not, not only here. But um, in other places.
I, let me, let, let me make sure though you understand, I'm not a pool person, but I think those people deserve the right to express. What, what they'd like to see, that, that was.
Are you saying indoor Greg or outdoor pool?
I think they were looking at an indoor pool.
Yeah, for the school, yep. Because I know the school is swimming.
For the school, but for, for the community. And they, they should, they, they should have the opportunity to uh share what they're interested in, I'm not saying. Or against it, I haven't been swimming in twenty years. But I, I think they should have the opportunity to share their thoughts about that.
Right, I agree, and I do think that one of the things we could do is with the school district, because the school district has a good swimming program, but no pool. That we could, you know, work together with the school district and maybe if, 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 again, down the road, if it's something. It's something that we can look at, because I've talked to a lot of people at the school. That also say, hey, it'd be good to have a community pool that the school could also use for their needs and that.
That was feedback that was included in the survey as well.
Yep.
A lot of people mentioned a desire for a pool, not. Many of them also mentioned that because the school district doesn't have one, but there was a lot of interest in a pool as well.
I, I, I seriously doubt the school districts got money for a pool, but.
Oh, no, 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 I'm saying just a way to be creative about it.
I, I just think those people need to have the opportunity to express their interest as well.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with you, I think it's fair to, to hear their, to hear their concerns.
I agree. I don't, I don't know the practicality of this, but, you know, it's not very practical, I mean, you know, we have twenty-six thousand residents and, you know. Alls I need to do is tour the fire department or tour the police department and it's obvious. We need certain things, it's probably not practical for the entire public that's interested to go through those facilities, but. Something like was done at, you know, Dunn, the Dunn Center with a virtual tour. Um, I wonder if it'd be possible, you know, to show some of the needs. You know, the trailers and bolt-ons and things we're doing with the police and what were. Conditions that people are at at the fire department, I don't know if that'd be helpful for understanding of the public, I mean, we see it, but. You know, it's not just, you know, we'd love to just build these facilities because they look great.
I think it'd be a great idea uh to be able to show that you, by just something like that, you'd be able to show the community. What the conditions are because. Your typical resident, what I say typical, just they, they're not going to have seen that, they're not going to see the facility, so. It gives them an opportunity to see the same thing what we, we would see if we go on a tour. Um, but by doing something like that, it does show you what the need is and. You know, the chief can say, this is, this is where the evidence room is, because I remember going through, I'm like. You do what, where? And I'm like, okay, and so from that standpoint, I, I think it would be a very good idea.
Something to think about. Um, okay, um, I think it's good discussion, I don't think we're. In a position to do anything right now, anyone disagree with that?
No.
But maybe, maybe we can think about for next agenda or a future agenda, uh, we might have some input from.
Dave, can I say something?
Sure.
Um, I, I just listened to all five of you and you, you said the police and you said the fire and not one word about the highway department. For the entire winter, we were jammed like sardines in these garages. And still, and we still have numerous pieces of equipment sitting outside. And I've been here thirty-some years, the police have gone through three renovations and the front office has gone through two. And they haven't touched us yet, we're still living in nineteen sixty-seven. I don't.
Very good point Clarence.
Yep, that's a fair point.
I tried to say it Clarence, but I didn't say it well, because I did go with the tour with you and I was amazed and you certainly worked within close quarters.
Bad during the summer because a lot of the stuff sits out, because we're using it, like the paving stuff. But when you guys start putting things away, it's hard, it's, and then you have every, all the trucks loaded for the winter time, you've got the chains on them, plows on them. Uh, these trucks, they, they all gained six, seven feet because of the spreader and the plows. Uh, they just, you know, it just becomes impossible to put this stuff away, and if you leave it out and you get a freezing rain, you've got a mess.
I mean, would it hurt Dave to engage with somebody just to, even just look at the current land and start to at least get things on paper?
If you look at the twenty sixteen, what they were talking about, they did some plans. And what they're trying to do is put ten pounds in a five pound sack. It, it looks, it don't look bad, but you're still crowded. It's extremely, it's going to be an extremely crowded uh compound here, uh.
What are you talking about, oh, you're talking about the current?
Right here, you're talking about renovating this place.
Well, that should be sold, because it's going to have a higher value, that property. To the promenade, well, the plan was that we could sell.
You're talking about selling.
It's going to make more money, yeah. That would pay for a lot of the promenade, as well as private sector money.
I would hope you guys take a good look at the rest of this place, I mean, there's a, this place needs a lot of work. And, and it's not big ticket stuff, it's all, all the HVACs are getting old. Uh, the garage itself is getting pretty old, like, again, it's a nineteen sixty-seven, um, the metal sheds, they're really starting to rust. Their metal. And they've been here forever, so, they, so, it, it's. It, it's a lot more than just. They, so it, it's, it, it's a lot more than just the police and fire.
Yeah.
I think a virtual, I think a virtual tour of all, of all three of those facilities, I think would be in order. It allows everyone to see it. We also could go back and take a look at the plans. Um, and, and then make a determination. I just, right now, I don't think is the time to move forward with a huge plan without all of our ducks in a row.
Yeah, the other thing is, if, if you're gonna have a town hall meeting and you don't have something to show these people, all they're gonna do is just stand there and yell at each other. Because one's gonna say they want this and the other one's gonna say, I want this. And nobody's gonna agree on anything. It's, it's gonna be reminiscent of the last time we had a cable television uh, meeting over at the library, if you remember that.
Yep.
That was a disaster. Uh, and that's what you're gonna have again, because if you don't have some kind of guidance from somebody, somebody's gonna have to stand up and say, this is what you can do. That's, that's all I'm saying.
And Clarence, I think that was.
I can't do that. Maybe you guys can, I can't.
Right, now, that was my point as far as the one architect on, on hourly basis or whatever. They worked on this back in, you know, someone back then. And you can see from some of those maps that, you know, when you satisfy all the needs, it is crammed in there and that's, you're looking at seven, seven acres versus seventeen acres. So it is much different footprint. But again, do any of us know, it doesn't, does what we need, does it require twelve acres? I, I don't know. And.
But, but we're never gonna know the way we're going, I guess. That's my.
That was my point as far as.
We're just gonna wait till next month, wait till next month. It's all we do. It's all the sport does. We don't do anything. I mean, I, I, it doesn't hurt to pick an architect and just a, again, do the hourly rate or just start to get some idea.
You, you're jumping, you're going right back to where we started.
Okay, Michelle, it's.
Where we're gonna be.
Yeah, no, we're not. We're getting ideas.
I do agree with Clarence, you know, certainly, and, you know, the service electric meeting, if we, if we're sitting up there and okay, what is the new, you know, for putting the salt trucks and the salt storage, what is that? I have no idea what space it takes out, what it costs, anything. We're gonna listen and draw a long brainstorming list, but I can't answer any of the questions.
We have to start gathering the data, whether it's architect or pick someone else or find another company that we need to start ga- gathering what we have.
And, and not to be disrespectful to the residents, they don't care what it takes to store trucks. You know, it's not, it's not the police. I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's not the fire trucks. They don't, they don't really think much about us, and that's fine. I, I get it, because, you know, we're better off out of sight, out of mind, but unfortunately, when it comes to this, uh, we're, we're kinda backed in a corner here because.
Well, look how the township grew Clarence. I mean, all the roads now compared to where you were in nineteen sixty-seven, it's crazy.
Since I've been here, our mileage has doubled. I mean, think about that. And those are mileage in developments, not rural roads. Those roads are thirty feet wide, not twenty feet wide. And thirty-six feet wide. These, the developments, uh, it, it's a lot of miles. It's, you know, we call it a hundred, I think it's a hundred, just under a hundred twenty, but if you break those thirty-six foot wide roads down to what they real, what, what they would be and you're probably, we're close to a hundred and forty miles. But, you know, it, it's just a lot of, there's a lot there that people just don't think about.
To me, I, I, I go back to what I originally said about this. We need more information to make an educated decision. That, that's the bottom line. We would, we just will, we will just continue to spin our wheels until we, we do something with an expert.
And do you agree, Greg, that picking an architect is getting more information? Do you agree?
Yes. I mean, that's who's gonna provide information for us.
Yes, yes, that's, that's, we're on the same page.
I mean, I, I don't see, two weeks from now or whenever our next meeting is, if it's a three-week gap, well, we won't be any further along.
No, Michelle's gonna say, let's wait. I mean, it's, it's gonna be the same old, same old. Hey, Dave, Dave, in light of what I'm hearing, I would recommend that somebody make a motion, whether it's to a table or to approve, uh, or whatever. There's just, there's a lot of different things coming, so I wouldn't, I think you should get, you guys should get a motion on this, whatever it is.
And the promenade mall until, um, future when we know more about what's going on with the COVID. And we have all the town meetings and input from the residents.
Just to clarify, was that just, was that a motion to table the selection of the architect for the promenade? Is that what that was? Okay, I, I will second that.
And I'm going to vote against that because I think we need more information.
I'm gonna make a motion to select KCBA as an architect. We need to vote on Michelle's.
We have to vote on Michelle's first.
Okay, correct.
Yeah, I, I would like, you know, I would like the best of both worlds, not tabling, but not selecting, but an hourly consultant that can help us get to a point to make some decisions.
Yeah, the KCBA has the experience with the township already, um, Greg has experience with them from Boyer Town, so there, there's a good track record there. I dealt with them with the fire department in twenty sixteen as I got on the board, so I have a comfort level with them and we could renegotiate the hourly charge to Dave's point.
All right, well, we got a motion on the table and we have a second. No further discussion on that one. I think we, all those in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Opposed? What's that, just Michelle?
Which motion are we doing?
This is your motion.
To table.
To table, motion to table. Opposed?
Aye.
Aye, I'm gonna oppose as well. But I'm only, I'm opposing because I'd like to make a motion to, after looking at the drawings, I understand Clarence's concern, but a lot of work was done back in twenty sixteen. I don't know if square footage was analyzed or anything else. But I would make a motion to select that architect, I believe it was KCBA from back in twenty sixteen. They were also the low bidder on this one. But only on an hour, if we can amend on an hourly consulting basis, and they would also be present at public meeting, to determine the actual needs and that is the fire, the police and the highway department or whatever. So we can actually determine what could fit where if we go ahead with that. This is not a lot of money. This is, you know, an analysis, um. So I would say if, if they're willing to do that on an hourly basis, I would make that motion.
I'll second it.
And, and again, I, sorry to belabor this, but without knowing an hourly rate or a minimum or maximum or anything like that, I would be opposed to it. I, again, and I, I'm not looking to delay anything. And I know, John, I know what you said. I've done this a hell of a lot of times, man. And I'm just not comfortable without knowing numbers. And, and so I, I'm not gonna, I can't.
Can I jump in, Joe?
Sure.
Uh, I wanna amend my motion. And amend my motion to ask them to submit a proposal to us explaining where we're at. Hourly rate to work on getting us to a point to where we can make a, a decision. So we're not, we're not committing any money tonight. We're asking for the next meeting for them to modify a proposal. I or someone else, Greg and one of us can have a discussion with them and say, this is where we're at. These are the questions we need to ask. What is the hourly rate? Can you, can we do this? Get the public engaged and determine our actual needs and the footprint and to see where that piece of the puzzle fits then.
I second the amended motion.
Any further discussions on that? So the first motion died. That was my amended motion. Greg has seconded that. No further discussion. All those in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Eyes have it. So we're committing no money at this point, but we will come back at the next meeting with a modified proposal that's clear to, to Joe's point of what it would take to get to, to get us some more information.
Hey, Dave, just to help Laurie, was that, Michelle, was your vote, uh, were you an aye in support or a nay on that one?
She was a nay.
You were a nay. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Sam.
But Joe, you were, Joe, you were yes, right?
Yeah, on, on the revised yes. I can live with that one. Thanks.
Okay, good discussion. Thanks, everyone. Not an easy one. Uh, discussion on the summer playground program. Laurie, um, well, you can, I think we covered this last time. I don't know if you have something else to update us with or?
Um, I have a little bit of an update, not a whole lot. Well, I mean, things are changing every five minutes, it, it seems like. But I just thought I'd give a little bit of an update on what has changed since the last meeting, any new things that have happened. Um, so since our meeting last time, and I think it, it was the same night as our meeting, Spring Township canceled their summer playground program. Amity has canceled their playground program, um, and they were doing that in conjunction with the Renning YMCA. So the YMCA is canceling some of their summer programming as well. Um, we know, and we talked about this a little bit earlier, that although Berks County is looking to move into the yellow phase as of June fifteenth, so next Friday, uh, that does not lift a substantial amount of restrictions as it relates to our summer program. Uh, we still have, while we would be allowed to, technically, we'd be allowed to run the program. Uh, according to the Wolf administration, they put out some guidance that um, was less than clear, I'll, I'll say to me. Uh, they do recommend, you still have to follow all the CDC guidelines and you're restricted in the number of people that they really are encouraging the twenty-five or less. So we'd have to really figure out how to break up our program into small groups. And like I said last time, we have about two hundred and forty registered kids. Um, so we're used to really large groups, um, and, and a significant number of staff, so that would be a big challenge for us. Um, the CDC is also recommending and, and PRPS is recommending that staff do wellness checks on, on kids when they arrive to the program. Uh, that's a concern for me. Um, it just feels like a big barrier to have to cross there for, for my staff. So that's where we're at with that. And, and I can also show you, um, the CDC. I just thought I would share this decision tree that they put together, um. So this is their recommended guidance for making a decision on whether or not to hold camp. So you can see in the, the first column is, can you, can you be consistent with state and local orders? So I would say, yes, we would be able to. Are you ready to protect children and employees at a higher risk for severe illness? I'm not so sure about that. We don't have a lot of training in that. Uh, my staff are not obviously medical professionals, nor are they trained childcare providers. Um, and are you able to screen children and employees upon arrival for symptoms and history of exposure? I would say I wouldn't really be comfortable asking my staff to do that. Um, so that's kind of where I'm at at this point, and I know that when we talked to the last meeting, we were, everyone was sort of leaning towards, um, canceling for all of those reasons. And I, I don't think enough has come out. In, in my perspective as the person in charge of the program, I don't think enough restrictions have been lifted for us to comfortably be able to offer a program that we can guarantee that we can keep kids free from illness.
Yeah.
And have most townships, Laurie? I'm sorry, Dave, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, I think Greg, Greg predicted this and summed this up very well. It's very unlikely. We're not gonna get to that point. Um, I don't think we should belabor this and keep people on the edge, so I would make a motion to cancel the summer playground program.
All right, sorry, I'll second. Go ahead, Greg.
Quick, everyone's jumping.
Greg, got it. I just have, we have just one question, Laurie. So have, I know Spring Township canceled and a couple others. Have any townships, are they trying to run with it? Just curious.
I have so far not seen any that have said, yes, we're definitely doing it. Um, but this guidance from the Wolf administration, that only came out over the weekend. Um, and I went through that a lot today. And there, there's just, I, personally, and I think other people are struggling with it too. I'm really struggling with, there's not, because it's such a new issue, things are changing so much and there's just not a firm answer. There's not, there's not a black and white. Um, yes, if you do this, you can do it. It's safe, you're good. Um, and I just, it's a lot of kids and there's a really huge amount of risk involved that it just.
Yeah, safety first.
Safety first.
Yeah, and from a legal standpoint, given what Laurie just said about her staff, I, I would have, it would, it would be a, a very, a serious legal concern to bring a bunch of kids in here if the staff's not adequately capable of assessing their condition and, and, and it's, I, I would recommend strongly you consider canceling it under those circumstances.
Yeah, I mean, and, right, and that's kind of where I was at Sam too, because there's not a lot of guidance out there, like there, there's no training that's available that I know, like I can send my staff to mandated reporter training. That's wonderful. They can learn it. There's nothing established right now that I can feel comfortable sending my staff so that they know exactly how to do it. I wouldn't necessarily know, like, what are the, what are the benchmarks? What, what do you look for? How do, you're not a medical professional. How do you know what the, what symptoms to look for?
Let's vote.
Yeah, we, yeah, I mean, Greg, I, I thought about this after the last meeting and it took me about five minutes after Greg's comment to know this. It was not practical, but anyway, all those in favor of canceling the summer playground program?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it. Very good, Greg. We're moving on. New business.
Thanks, Laurie.
Advertisement of the June, June Board, Board of Supervisors meeting. Uh, this is for June eighth and June twenty-second. Like I mentioned before, I know we had a public comment on this, but you know, nothing magical is gonna happen here. We're just going to yellow at the end of the week. Uh, nothing is indicating us that we're gonna go to green, so by advertising, I don't think that if something magical were to happen, that we can't go back and, and change that advertisement. But it saves, saves money when you do multiple advertisements in, in one ad.
I'll make a motion to authorize advertisement of the June Board of Supervisors meeting for virtual, held virtually on June eighth and June twenty-second.
I second it.
Any further discussion? All those, all those in favor? Eyes have it.
Laurie, could you put the agenda back up?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
All right, amendment to agreement with Birdsboro Power, allowing Birdsboro Power to change financial institutions for issuance of their letter of credit securing payments due to the township.
Do you want, do you want me to address this, Dave?
Yes, Sam, I think, yeah, you, you, yeah, go ahead.
Sure, so the, uh, as, as hopefully you all know, we, we have an agreement and we have an agreement with Birdsboro Power, uh, for they were there to pay two and a half million dollars for an easement on the old wastewater, uh, property. That was accepted from the sale. We retain those contractual rights, the rights to those payments. Uh, I don't, or Jen could probably weigh in if you have questions as to where we are in that. I, I don't know the answer. I think they're, I know they paid five hundred thousand dollars upfront. My guess is they're probably right around a few bucks at this point. But the agreement requires them to maintain a letter of credit to secure the payments in place until the, uh, payment stream is done. The initial agreement, uh, they wanted it to be written so that it was a letter of credit issued by Citibank. They would like the opportunity to, uh, swap out, uh, that, that letter of credit, for, for lack of a better term, with a new, newly issued letter of credit from another, uh, uh, regulated bank that we have the right to approve in writing. We will not be releasing the letter of credit until we have the new letter of credit in hand, and they've agreed to, to do that. So I don't see any real risk to the township. You have the right to approve the, uh, you know, this is more of an accommodation to Birdsboro Power. They have a banking relationship, I guess, with the new financial institution. Uh, you have the right to approve the financial institution and you will not release the security until you have that other security in hand, so I don't see, uh, I don't see this as a very, um, controversial issue. If you have any questions, go let me know.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to the agreement with Birdsboro Power to change the financial institution for the issuance of the letter of credit.
I'll second.
That was you, Greg? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Discussion on community park, township staff, uh, Laurie or?
No. This is, we're not, we're not looking to have a long discussion tonight. We just wanted to bring this up to you, to start thinking about it. I think Laurie's gonna have two pictures to show you. One is of the small pavilion, which also has these closet space, or whatever you wanna call it, storage space rather, and restrooms. And the other one is the old pavilion. The restrooms, that building on, on the bottom is in horrendous shape. There is nothing we can do inside to make that place nice. Those bathrooms.
Actually, we only have, only one of them is functional. We, because of all the vandalism we were experiencing last summer, we transitioned, we moved to just a one, uh, unisex bathroom. So, there's only one restroom facility working there, and like Clarence, that, it's not in good shape.
The reason, and the other thing is, the lease is coming up in five years. How much money do you wanna spend is what we need to know. I don't care, if you want us to fix this up, we'll try and fix it up. If, if you're gonna replace it, that's a large expense. Um, really what should happen, that's, that small pavilion should, the whole thing should just be tore down and a whole new, uh, set of restrooms and a storage area, and forget the pavilion on that, on that cement slab, because those restrooms, two, two, two toilets for the, for the ladies' room is not enough for that size park. And same for the boys' room, it's, you got one, one toilet and one urinal. Uh, it's not enough room, um. But again, it's just, it's just, the, the whole building is just horrendous, the roof is shot. It, we just need to know what direction you wanna go. Also, with the big pavilion, that's in very poor shape. Uh, those are just old wooden, uh, poles holding that thing up. It, it should be replaced. Um, so, we just want you to start thinking about that, and this is probably a good time because somewhere down the line, before next year, we should do something.
And Clarence, just so you can let Joe, Greg, and Michelle know, is that this is land that we leased from the school district, but it's in St. Lawrence, so it's not even in Exeter.
Um, Laurie and Jen already had a discussion with St. Lawrence. They don't want anything to do with it, obviously.
Yeah, I met with, I met with St. Lawrence and the school district.
Yeah, I know Greg, last year we did that, and they both had no interest in it.
Yeah, they're not, they're not really interested in it.
But they're utilizing, uh, you know.
Well, the St. Lawrence Police Department, the Central Berks Police is it.
That's the other issue, we have a lot of vandalism issues, and our police department can't do anything.
Correct.
They tore three sinks off last year.
So, this is, this is a mess, guys. That we tore the parks part because of a safety issue. I think you, you should tear, tear down that piece too, if it's a safety concern as well.
You know, really, if anybody would look at it, I would gladly take, you know, go over and lock it and let you in. But it's a horrendous building, it's, it's not something, you, you can't, you know, the old saying, you can't shine in a lot. So, that's, it's just ugly. Uh, there's just not much you can do with it anymore.
Just Happy Landings, parents?
Pardon?
Yes. Happy Landings, okay. It's called Happy Landings.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to, I'd like to take a tour of it, again, you know, the kids, I mean, we were there a lot in the younger days, but certainly would take a tour of it, but I would, the one thing I would say is if it's not ours, and we continue to put money into, and it continues to be vandalized, then there's a point in time where you don't put any more money into it.
Well, that's our plan.
I mean, yeah, there's, there's just, there's just a point in time where, again, too, you don't have to keep rebuilding something for it to get ripped apart.
Right, that's, that's what we wanna know, that's.
Yeah, if this were in Exeter, I, I'd be all for it, but to me, we're investing in something that's, A, it's, it's St. Lawrence. So, I don't see the value of us keep on in building stuff in there.
Clarence, I'll, I'll get with you and come down and take a look at it, okay?
Yeah, just, you know, whenever you want.
We can't police it, you know, so, we, that's why we made the decision on the playground.
It's a difficult place to protect, because, you know, they see something coming down the road from up at the, the old, the last school. I mean, you got lots of places to take off to, so, you're not gonna catch anybody then.
Right.
I have a question with this, we, we have a five-year lease with this?
Five years remaining.
With the school district, Greg.
Well, what, what are our responsibilities with regards to that?
Well, just maintaining it, uh, it's, we're supposed to keep it maintained.
Right.
I think it's like, what, it's a dollar? It's like a dollar.
Yeah, it's a dollar.
It's like a dollar a year, Greg, we pay just for a formality standpoint.
But there's nothing in the contract that states that we need to maintain a pavilion or restroom facilities.
We'd have to love to be safe.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Clarence, but Clarence, I think that we, when we initially leased that, we put that, we put the playground equipment in, and, and this was done many, many years ago. I don't think this, we had a lease before this 25-year lease, I believe.
Well, which playground equipment are you talking about?
Well, Happy Landings.
No, that was done.
That was Volunteers, but.
Yeah, we didn't do that, that was privately.
That was Alliance Club, I think.
Yeah, we didn't do any, we didn't have anything to do with that.
Clarence, I would, I would double check any contractual obligation we have on the facility, and then for us to take a look at it and then make a decision, but it makes no sense whatsoever to put money into a place that continues to get destroyed that we don't own.
That's why we're bringing it up now.
Well, thank you very much.
Yep.
Yeah, I'd rather do, I'd rather do the, you know, the tennis courts at my farming ridge, the trout run.
True.
Parks that are in Exeter.
And Clarence, maybe if you could get a cost on the teardown? I mean, I'm sure as part of our lease, at the end of the lease, we're gonna have to remove any structures that are falling apart anyway. So, like the playground, I think there was a cost certainly involved in that, but I'm sure there's a cost of dismantling these facilities.
All right.
Okay. Thank you. Discussion on Clapperfall Road parking issues. Is this for the chief?
Yes, I, I have that. So, uh, so far this year, since it's gotten warm here, the police department has received, um, in excess of 25, uh, calls for service or complaints, uh, about parkers parking along Clapperfall Road, uh, to use the Never Sink Loop Trail for hiking. Um, the internet directs, uh, those people who wanna use the trail to park at the end of Clapperfall Road. Um, there's approximately six parking spaces, um, designated at the end of Clapperfall Road, um, in that parking area. However, that, uh, that parking area is in Lower Alice Township. Um, after those spaces fill up, hikers start parking along Clapperfall Road. Uh, the cars are being parked, uh, partially on the roadway, uh, on the property of Forest Hill Cemetery, and, uh, they're causing damage to cemetery property. And at peak times, uh, residents are, are having their driveways being blocked, and, uh, they can't get deliveries, or in event of emergency, we can't get, uh, emergency equipment, uh, down at the end of the, uh, trail there. Um, so, what, what we're, what we temporarily did is we had temporary no parking signage there, and, uh, since we did that, um, we've issued about 50, uh, plus parking tickets. Um, I know it was a huge problem this last weekend, and as it gets warm here, we continue to, uh, we foresee a continuing problem there. Um, so, what we are requesting is permanent no parking signs, uh, to be added along Clapperfall Road, um, from West Never Sink Road, uh, to the township line. Um, so, we need Board of Supervisory approval to, uh, draft an amendment and have it advertised, uh, for that permanent, uh, no parking signs to be placed.
Thanks, Steve.
So, you need a motion? A motion for the police department to permanent, to put no parking signs along Clapperfall Road and West Never Sink Road and the township line.
Uh, John, could you amend that slightly to be, to draft an, or an amendment to the ordinances?
I'm sorry, to make it, to, uh, amend my motion to require an amendment to Township Ordinance 360-14.
And, and authora, and authorized advertising of the same.
And authorized advertisement of the same.
I'll second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Laurie, could we have the agenda again?
Yep.
You don't wanna see the bathroom anymore. Uh, consider purchase of 2020 Ford Ranger with spray and bed liner for $28,515. Clarence or Larry?
Yes, Larry.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, now.
Okay. Uh, yes, this was a budgeted item that we had, uh, for this year. Um, the budget number was at $34,000 and some odd dollars. Uh, due to the COVID thing, I checked with, uh, the dealer that we deal with. The truck we can receive now is 27915 through Co Stars. Um, as we were getting ready to, uh, inspect the 2004 pickup truck that we have here, it's gonna cost us $3,200 in repairs due to, uh, a lot of rust issues, electrical issues, uh, brakes, rotors, all normal wear and tear. Um, the body is really rough on it, for the most part. So, instead of spending this money to just repair the truck that we eventually wanted to get rid of anyways, I'd try to ask you guys to see if we could purchase this truck, even though, uh, due to the COVID-19, we didn't wanna spend any money.
Larry, this truck, this truck is used on a regular bit, as daily basis?
Uh, yes, we're actually using it, uh, every day here lately to, uh, for our paving project. Um, it actually pulls the tack boat machine, uh, that tacks the roads down. However, the new truck will not be used for that. The new truck would be placed into a management vehicle, and then that management vehicle will be placed, which is an older truck, to, uh, be put to work as that truck was.
So, you're swapping out, yeah?
Yes, we, yeah, we'll basically move trucks around, just so, uh, we get more life out of the trucks by, uh, putting in the management first. Um, and then therefore, when we replace trucks, we always replace the management trucks and then put their trucks into service.
Thanks, Larry.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not one that's in favor of stinking $3,200 in a 2004 pickup, and with the savings there, I know we don't wanna spend money, but.
I, I agree. I'll make a motion to purchase a 2020 Ford Ranger with spray and bed liner for, uh, $28,515.
And there again, you also see a $7,000 savings roughly with, uh, purchasing it now with our budget number.
So, yeah, you're looking about at $10,000 reversal. Now, with the repairs you would sink in versus the savings you're gonna get.
Right.
I second that. Any, any further comments from others?
Is there any trade or anything on this, this thing, Larry, or what are we doing with the?
Uh, what we would do is, uh, after everything calms down with the COVID thing, we would put it on municipal bid. Um, due to being taxpayer stuff, this way it is auctioned off.
Right.
Um, like, for instance, tobacco, we did not put that on municipal bid right now, because right now with everything going on, it wouldn't be a good time, or we wouldn't see a good return.
Any idea what the value would be, just a ballpark?
Uh, here lately, like, uh, for instance, the 2003 Dodge pickup that we sold last year, um, I estimated that we'd see close to two grand. Um, it was almost $6,000 on municipal bid, so it's.
Okay, thank you.
It's hard to say with four-wheel drive vehicles, people buy them for farms. Uh, we see a lot of that with our dump trucks, that farmers want them. Uh, job sites where they are doing new job sites, they want just to run around on the site. It's hard to say.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Consider approving two appointments, thanks Larry. Consider approving two appointments for the library board vacancies.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Dr. Haller and Brett Diamond. They're doing it at the time, Dr. Haller with, and I second, appreciate her service.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
And I'll make the motion to accept the resignation of Brett Diamond to the, from the library board vacancy, thank him for his service.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. And I think the library board has submitted, uh, two applicants.
I'll make a motion to appoint Mandy Miller and Courtney Bowman to replace the two applicants, the two vacancies on the library board. Both live in Exeter, both really engaged with the library, so, two really good people.
You can do them together?
It's fine.
I'll second it. For this. I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Approval of time extension for 10 Santa Maria Drive subdivision.
Um, this is a, the, a 90-day, um, review period is about to expire at the beginning of June. Um, the applicant is requesting an additional 90 days due to, uh, pandemic reasons.
I'll make a motion to, uh, give a time extension for 10 Santa Maria Drive subdivision.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Uh, consider applications for rental relief for May 2020 for Promenade Shopping Center. I think we said last time that we would consider requests, and we would review those quests, requests as they came to the board.
Do we get information, Jen, on, I, I know the pizza guy paid, do you have the information as to who, who's okay, who asked for something? Okay.
I do, so, all seven tenants received a letter stating they had to request for rental, make a request for rental relief for their May payment. Um, we received a couple correspondences. The first one we received was from Hollywood Cleaners, um, in the board workspaces, with the letter that they sent, or the email that they sent, and also, uh, two of their sales reports, one was for April 2019, and one was for April 2020, showing that their sales are down significant. Um, April 19, they had $20,000 in sales, and April of 2020, they only had about $2,000 in sales. So, they are saying they've been significantly impacted by the pandemic, and they are asking for May 2020 rental relief. Uh, we did receive a, a letter that you referenced from Riviera Pizza. He was thanking, uh, the board for giving him rental relief in April. He is open and operating, uh, but on limited hours. He said he was able to make his May payment, he has already sent that in, but he said if the, if this continues for much longer, where he has limited hours, reduced hours, he may need relief in the future, was what his statements were. Uh, we've also received correspondence from Monroe Muffler. Uh, they actually sent us a, uh, what I'm gonna call a blanket letter that they sent out to all of their landlords, stating that they've been impacted, they've remained open, but they've been impacted, they've had decreased sales. They were actually, um, not even requesting, they were stating that they were going to, uh, do their own rental relief for the next six months, from May through November. Uh, I forwarded that over to Sam at Fox Rothschild. Uh, we have replied back to them, stating that they, we, they can't take six months of rental relief, that if they wanted rental relief for May, they had to submit, um, a letter and some documentation. They did that today, I believe that is uploaded as well. Um, and basically, all they gave us was some, some sales figures, they included no reports, they said they had no reports to show at this point, but they included there were sales figures that their sales have been, have decreased 30-ish percent. Um, so, those are the three requests that we received. Um, I believe most of their folks, we've actually received their rental payment so far.
Great, thanks Jen, um, one, well, a couple clarifying ones. The one on, so, the pizza's a non-issue, Riviera Pizza's a non-issue right now for this meeting. The Monroe, I believe they were asking for three months deferral to be paid in 2021 timeframe. So, they're not asking for forgiveness, they're asking to delay those payments, right?
Yeah, they, they changed that, yeah, they changed, yeah, in their response.
Yeah, the first time was six months of not paying at all, now it's three months of deferrals.
Correct.
So. And yes, they submitted, they weren't great sales reports, but I mean. And yes, they submitted, they weren't great sales reports, but I mean, I, it's certainly not busy out there.
Right. They just didn't submit any actual documentation. They just stated that their sales in March were down twenty-seven percent. April sales were down forty and forty-five percent and they don't have their May sales yet.
Do we know if that's a, um, company owned or is that privately owned? That's, that is a. So it's not franchise. Any history with previous payments with them?
Not since we've owned the Promenade, no.
Yeah, Joe, the letter came from some, a, a corporate office and.
It came from New York, yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't know if they're protecting the franchisee. You know, the concern obviously is if it gets to a point, you have to get into any type of litigation. That's not cheap either. Um, I, I wasn't crazy about the initial letter they sent with mandating that they're not paying for six months. Uh, the, the three-month deferral is a little bit more in line. I would prefer to do it on a month-to-month basis and, um, extending it out, especially if they had had, if they've had a history of paying. Um, Sam, what's your take on that?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I don't think that's, um, the, the request is not unreasonable. I, I find it, I was, uh, I was not thrilled with their response as I indicated to Jen earlier today. I, I don't think it's very hard to, as, to push print for an outfit like Monroe Muffler on a, on a quick book page and send it over to substantiate the law. So I, I didn't think they really, you know, they really got their best foot forward here, but you know, in terms of the request, obviously it's a big outfit. It's certainly much better to defer. I, I don't view this as a take it or leave it though, Joe. If you wanna, if your response, if the board's response was we'll agree with deferring, uh, this month for now and then we want to revisit next month and hopefully by then you'll be able to give us, you know, the reports that we asked for so we can actually see the detail behind what you're requesting. Then you will take up, you know, you can take up next, the, the request for the following month at the next board meeting. So I don't, I don't read their email to you guys as this is, it's, this is take it or leave it, just as I, you know, the, the initial shot that they took didn't, didn't work either. They can be perfectly reasonable to go back if you want and say fine, uh, if this is what you're inclined to do, fine, we'll defer this month's payment, but, you know, uh, we'll consider next month, next month, and you need to really give us more detail.
That's a. Personally prefer month-to-month and then taking it on a month-to-month basis, but share some proof that the receipts are down, but even then, I mean, their receipts are down. I mean, whether they show it to us or not, their receipts are down.
Yeah, the concern I have is that they weren't honest with us and giving us the numbers. I mean, it's something they could have done. So I, I think we should do the month thing and not really, not, not go beyond that. Cause I think they, you know, they need to provide the data. You know, we're only trying to help them, so I don't know why they're being shady about it.
Yeah, and it is a deferral, so I mean, I'm okay with a one-month deferral and then request data for June, June.
Take it on a month-to-month basis and share proof of hardship. I, I don't see where that's, again, they're paying us on our property. I we're certainly not asking for anything unreasonable. They can go in and pull out their reports. Doesn't take that long.
Okay, unless, unless anyone feels differently, we'll, we'll communicate that to them.
Okay. Well, what's everybody else's thoughts?
I don't think we need a motion. I mean, it, it, I'm, I'm hearing what the boards, yeah, you know what? We may as well get a motion just to be safe.
I'll make a motion to, uh, defer Monroe Muffler's, uh, rent payment for is it, is it May, for, for May twenty twenty, um, for, for three months.
I'll second that.
I think that was not, I think you're deferring May twenty twenty payment.
This one, one month.
Right, that's one month.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's, he's moving it out three months.
Three, giving them a three-month extension.
It's. That's fine for now and, and again, he can, I, 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 he, they can address that, you know, if they want to provide more detail, Dave, I think that gives them.
Any further discussion on that one?
Was it seconded?
It was seconded.
Jen, are you okay with the rest of them then?
We gotta do Hollywood yet. Let's first vote on this one.
Gotcha.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Four, one. Is, so it is approved for one month deferral for three months for Monroe Muffler. So now Hollywood?
What were, what were the numbers again, Jen? What were the numbers again?
Uh, Hollywood's sales numbers?
Yeah.
Uh, their revenue in April of twenty nineteen was nineteen thousand two hundred dollars and it went down in April twenty of two thousand one hundred dollars. So they went from about twenty grand down to two thousand dollars.
Is that locally owned or is that a chain?
That is actually locally owned. Um, it is owned actually by an Exeter resident.
So a ninety percent decrease in revenue for the month. And they're asking for relief, not deferral.
Correct. They were asking for relief. And they're always on time with their payments as well.
I think there has to be consistency. I don't think we can, I don't think it's the right thing to do and I know it's a different situation from a large franchise to a locally owned business. But, um, my recommendation is that we would take the same approach and defer. Um, and then we could always amend down the road if need be, but that's the approach I would, that's what the approach I would take.
Yeah, we, we have to be consistent. I agree with Joe.
All right.
Is that a motion?
Um, okay, I. I was gonna say, I moved to defer the payment for, uh, the rent payment for May of two thousand twenty for Hollywood Cleaners for three calendar months.
I'll suck it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Four, one. Yeah, so deferred. Okay, I think that was all of them, Jen.
That was.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we did number nine, the waiver, uh, for total recycle update on community communications committee. Anything to report? Greg or Laurie?
Laurie, what's our number now for electronic mailing list?
Uh, three oh seven.
So, we continue to grow and we're looking at having a June, we're gonna put together the June newsletter next week, so that'll be our first newsletter. Um, the, the only other thing with the marquee, I think Joe and John, you guys were going to look at the Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah, I got that already. I forwarded on to the administration. Well, Lori and Clarence both have it. I got the entire list of the Greater Berks Wedding Chamber active members that have an email registered at the chamber, so it's a gigantic list, so we'll, we'll get something from that list.
What, um, what, what do you guys recommend our approach be with this?
For the marquee? Yeah, I think we should draft, we should draft a letter and do a blast email. Interest in sponsorship.
Okay.
Well, and, and with that, I think that, uh, the township needs to have an advertising policy.
Yeah, absolutely. We talked about that at the last meeting.
Yeah, I, I think that's something that would need to be developed and that way we have it and those prices as far as what it would, what it would cost for, whether it's annual or here or there.
Or six months or quarterly.
Correct. Yep.
Okay. So I, to me, it sounds like that might be something we, um, look towards the new township manager for. Does that seem reasonable?
That's fair.
Does to me.
Okay, the data, the, we have the data now, the emails, so now we'll just develop the policy and take it next step.
Okay, so that's all I've got. Laurie, do you have anything to add to this?
Nope.
Very good. Thank you. Department reports, uh, chief?
I don't have much of, uh, this week. I just said our officers are completing their annual spring weapons qualification, so we have that going on. Also, we've, uh, got our in-car computers, I'm sorry, in-car cameras now uh, in the vehicles. Uh, we're working out some of the bugs and training, uh, will commence on, on that, uh, here within the next, uh, week and a half or so. So we should have that program up and running as well, so I'm excited about, uh, getting those in-car cameras, uh, installed now that we have them done and, uh, getting for, moving forward with that project.
Great. Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Um, who next? Clarence, you wanna talk about?
Uh, just quickly, we're doing a lot of paving the last, last couple weeks here. Uh, it's been going really well. Uh, we have about two more days left with CMS and now we'll finish up over here in Rife. Uh, the, the remainder of the paving projects, we will be doing with, with our own equipment. Um, we are in the process of highway mowing right now. We're way behind on that. Uh, we also have been notified about the, uh, library grant has been received by the state, so that's good to go at, at this point and I was just waiting to hear what they have to say about it. Uh, line painting, if you have noticed, uh, some, a lot of the lines have been repainted. They're, they're also working on some of the intersections. It probably won't finish until probably, probably August because, uh, we have some roads that have to be repaid before they can finish everything. Uh, probably the only big thing I have is back in, uh, April ninth, when that big windstorm, uh, we had a lot of damage to the magistrate's office roof. Tore quite a bit of shingles off, tore the whole, uh, air duct system off. Uh, we, we managed to get that back up. Uh, it wasn't wrecked, which was quite amazing in itself because the thing was huge. Um, anyway, we had to put a new roof on it. That roof was more than twenty-five years old. Uh, the, we got, uh, a price of seventeen thousand three hundred and seventy-two dollars. We have a five thousand dollar deductible. Insurance company, uh, is giving us twelve thousand three hundred and seventy-two dollars, which leaves us, and, and the low quote, by the way, was from Ram Siding for three, thirteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars. So we are left with a one thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars and sixty-seven cents, which isn't bad for a new roof.
Excellent.
And that's all I got.
Great. Thanks, Clarence.
Thank you.
Sam?
Uh, I don't have anything tonight, Dave.
Okay, thank you. Joe?
Uh, I actually have nothing to report this evening either.
Very good. Uh, I guess we're public, I miss anyone? I think public comments, non-agenda items.
Uh, yes, we have. We have two. And the first one is again from Mr. Carmelo. And I'll play them separately. They're, they're on two different topics. I'll play them separately so it, so you can hear it a little better.
New township manager, the following is from Lord, number one hundred seventy-four amended four dash two six decimal nine eight two. The manager need not be a resident of the township at the time of appointment, but may not reside outside the township while in office except with the approval of the Board of Supervisors. One, one, is the board going to waive that requirement? Two, two, if so, what are the reasons for that decision?
And he has a second comment as well. Do you want me to play that now or? Did you want to respond to that?
Anyone comment on that? I mean, like an update on the township manager. We haven't formally made an offer yet, so I think it would be premature to comment on that unless someone else wants to take a stab, but obviously our preference was to have someone in, in-house, but, uh, we're still working through that process and we should be able to make an announcement hopefully at the next meeting. But we still need to go through the process.
And this is his last comment.
Promenade purchase. One, one, on what date was the promenade purchase completed? Two, two, what is the source of the funds used to make this purchase?
I don't have that information offhand, so I don't know if any, anyone else does or wants to comment.
Dave, I do. Dave, it was posted on October twenty-third. October twenty-third, two thousand nineteen.
Okay.
And the source of the funds, Jen?
Uh, it's from just out of the capital fund.
Thank you.
Very good.
Okay, and the last comment?
Thanks, Jen.
Last one is from David Hughes.
During the last two meetings and on some social media platforms, as well as among the supervisors themselves, some of the supervisors have made derogatory comments about residents and other supervisors. They interrupted other supervisors and jumped to wild and unfair assumptions and conclusions such as claiming a supervisor was wrong and residents' comments are falsehoods. This is suggesting that comments from residents are not taken seriously. Yet, according to Mr. Spies' meeting rules, the residents are to be respectful and watch their tone when making public comments to the Board of Supervisors. Clearly, this does not appear to apply to the Board of Supervisors themselves. They will attack, intimidate, ridicule, humiliate and disrespect the Exeter residents and each other. No apology can erase the last several meetings which record the supervisors' behavior toward each other and private citizens who dare submit comments that might question the decisions or future plans of the supervisors. The transparency it was promised and the commitment the supervisors made toward transparency has not yet appeared. Only we, the public, through oversight of our elected officials, can we hope to change this outrageous behavior? We have a board that has great power, but it is without any responsibility or public oversight. This has already hurt our community with the loss of the sewer and before us is a potential project that can result in massive overspending. The Promenade.
Um, will anyone else comment? But my only comment would be that, uh, is not my meeting rules. I do run the meetings, but as a board, we come up with the meeting rules as a group, so they're not my rules, but, uh, anyone else want to comment?
I emailed, um, Mr. Ter- Terrence Grierling with some of the falsehoods that, that he had. So I, I emailed him privately.
Okay. No other comments? Uh, supervisor reports? Uh, Michelle?
I have nothing. Thank you.
John?
I just have one thing, and Lori, if you could help me with this. Um, election day is next Tuesday, so a lot of locations in Exeter are changed. For example, Alpoff is closed due to COVID. You have to vote at Awatton now, so there's a list of five different voting locations in Exeter. So I have the list. I could send it to you and I think we, I suggest if the board approves that we should put that on the website so that people know where the, where to vote. There was also another website from the PA State, PA Voters Services, dot PA dot com, but that's less friendly than just listing, hey, this is where to vote. We could list both, the, the website to put your address in and tells you where to vote, as well as the new Exeter locations.
I agree, that should be on the website.
Okay, I'll get that listed tomorrow, Lori.
Sounds great.
And then, uh, everybody that, that didn't get a mail and vote, make sure you register to vote or make sure you vote in person if you can next Tuesday. Elections are important.
Thanks, Jen.
That's it. Thanks.
Uh, Joe?
Yeah, a couple things. One, uh, back to the, uh, the rent situation at the Promenade. Just, uh, I think it's important for us to understand that we need to do the, the best that we can to defer. best that we can to defer, um, pushing the situation for people that their business is significantly down. I don't think it's gonna help us. And, uh, you'll find, and again, history shows that if we go legal, it's gonna cost us more money, and we'll probably get less anyhow. So I think it's just food for thought. Um, I would recommend that, um, the next meeting, the information, the RFPs, there was a lot of good information for, uh, the solicitor and the engineer, uh, for us to review that. Uh, again, people took a lot of time to send the information in. Obviously, it was delayed because of COVID and, and folks being able to get that information. But I feel that, at this point in time, that we should be reviewing the information that was sent to us. Um, and also too, I know that, Jen, we had talked about it, uh, uh, but there is some potential for bond refinancing and maybe some leveling of the debt. Uh, we have some rates that are higher with the interest rate environment. And also too, uh, possibly instead of bonds, even bank loans now, there's some, uh, there's market for that right now. So I believe that we need to look into that to possibly save some money, uh, down the road. And then last thing, just, uh, just good news from the golf course. Derek shared some information. As of yesterday, we have twenty-two hundred ninety-three rounds, uh, for the, uh, month of May, with six days to go. Keep in mind, we took our tee times from eight minutes to twelve minutes, so we're spreading everything out. So, but rounds are significantly up. We had twenty-six seventy-seven, uh, last year, uh, for the entire month. Uh, so with, uh, I'm sure today was a good day with the weather, uh, so we will eclipse that. Um, the amount of time that, like the six or seven weeks we were out, um, that is, we brought in seventy-eight thousand dollars last year during that time. And right now, year-to-date, we're about forty-one thousand dollars off of last year's numbers. So if you take, if it would be a normal six-week period, we would actually be ahead, uh, ahead of the game. Um, uh, Snack Shack and Driving Range is open as of May twenty-third. Uh, Derek has a big tournament this weekend. They have fifty-two players, uh, for the event. And with us going yellow, um, on the fifth, the fifth.
Next Friday.
Yeah, next Friday. Um, we will be able to, we feel that based on the rules that the governor has given us, is that we will be able to open up the pro shop, which will, uh, help with merchandise sales as well. Um, as a matter of fact, uh, with, um, using our new credit card machine and computer over in the snack shop, uh, we brought in six hundred and seventy-nine bucks over the weekend using that machine. So that was probably folks that would not have spent that if they wouldn't have used that credit card. So, uh, thanks, Jen, for helping us get that. So again, things are, uh, very positive for the golf course. Uh, the numbers bear out that, uh, people were itchy to get out and, get out and breathe some fresh air. So that was it. Thank you.
Thanks, Jen. Greg?
Yeah, just follow up with Joe on that, uh, tournament he mentioned this weekend. In addition to, um, all the golfers, uh, the golfers will also be making, uh, about a fifteen hundred dollar contribution to the Exeter Library. You know, that, that's always been a, um, fundraiser we've done for the library. So they can look for about fifteen hundred dollars from that. The other thing I want to mention is the food pantry. Um, in March, they served a hundred and seventy-six families. April, they served five hundred seventy-six families. May, it was up to seven hundred and thirty-eight families. Now, they're giving, they had two gifts in April and May, but one of, one, uh, data point that stood out to me was in May, that it wasn't this, they had three sixty-two and then three seventy-six in terms of families in the two gifts, but it was five hundred and two different families. And al, and almost all of them are from this area. So there's a significant need out there. We are having a canned food drive Saturday, June sixth. Um, if you get a flyer in your neighborhood, that means someone will be around to pick up canned food between nine and one. If you do not get a flyer, you can bring it to the Exeter Promenade. Again, that's Saturday, June sixth, from nine to one. That's all I've got.
Greg, I have a map, Greg, I have a map of Exeter electronically. Would, would that help you?
It might.
I'll send it to you.
Tomorrow for the neighborhoods.
Okay, I'll, I, I think it'll help you.
I had one person count all the houses in Farming Ridge somehow with a map, and there's five hundred in some.
Yeah, use it, use it. I'll send it to you.
All right, thank you.
Take note of that.
Great. And, uh, yeah, just following a couple of comments you have as far as, uh, um, a couple of things. I want to thank all the supervisors for the open discussion tonight on a couple of difficult topics. Now, obviously, we're not all in agreement on those, but, uh, we, we gotta have those discussions, and it will be nice when we can have the public present for those. But, uh, just thank everyone for, for being civil and having those discussions and everyone voicing their opinions. And Clarence, thank for the reminders tonight. Uh, we're not overlooking the Highway Department needs, but it, it points out, it points out a great thing, and, and your, your comments made it very clear to me that not knowing our needs is, is something we need to pull together. Um, and I need to be putting it in terms of square feet and footprint, as Joe said.
Just a reminder, you should have some things to sign tonight, too, then.
Okay, yeah, we got the signing things. And then just thanks to, you know, Larry, Will, Jen, Lori, everyone for helping to run these meetings, um, be there to supply the data to help us here. And just finally, uh, thoughts and prayers again to the family of our firefighter who passed away. So if there's nothing else, uh.
I have something actually.
Go ahead, Lori.
I overlooked, they were in two separate emails, so I actually missed one public comment on general items. So I can play that quickly. It was in two emails, and I missed it here. It's from Mr. Riley. So he had, he sent two separate emails, one for agenda and one for general.
I have been wondering if the seven million dollar CD that was earmarked for the WWP was used to purchase the Promenade Shopping Center. I noticed that it was transferred out of the sewer fund by the end of two thousand eighteen, well before the sale of the WWP in October two thousand nineteen. If these monies were taken and used for the purchase, was this misappropriation of funds by the board? What have we done with the balance from the CD? Should it be used to pay off any of our debt from the WWP?
Um, let Jen or, or, or Sam comment on that, but I mean, all the debt will be paid off on the wastewater treatment plant, so that's.
Yeah, the debt, the debt's already been paid off, Dave.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's about four million dollars outstanding still on the debt. That was debt that was, could not be debited because it, uh, is due to mature next year. But that is earmarked to be paid from the proceeds. All of the debt from the sewer plant was paid from the proceeds.
And as far as the seven million dollars, I think that became part of the capital fund, or?
It did. It was transferred to the capital fund, uh, due to the impending sale of the plant. Uh, once, once we had an, a signed agreement of sale, we didn't need that money in order to do capital improvements at the plant. Uh, so it was unnecessary, and we did, uh, vet that through our auditors and through the solicitor that that could be moved over into a, um, into the, the capital fund.
Very good. Any other discussion on that? Comments? All right, well, we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I just had it unanimous. All right, everyone.